Now call the meeting's order.
Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Helping Meetings Act, notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of Said City, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 5:00 PM, in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Would everyone please stand up for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the City of Brownsville and our many blessings here. Most of all, we thank you that when we're in you, you promise to never leave us nor forsake us. We know that you have awesome plans for the City of Brownsville, and so we humble ourselves tonight to ask you to reveal those to us. And specifically tonight, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor, each city commissioner, and everyone that's presenting everything. And Lord, we thank you for the unity we experience here. Keep us in unity and yet transparent, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, idol of the Texas City, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Next, we will begin with the proclamations for National Cyber Security Awareness Month. If you would please step forward.
Ready? Mayor?
Yes.
Proclamation, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating October as Cyber Security Month, whereas the City of Brownsville recognizes that it is a, that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from, and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have a significant impact to our individual and collective safety and privacy, and whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems and technology to support financial services, energy telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, and whereas cybersecurity education and awareness is crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet, and whereas the Stop Think Connect Campaign serves as the national cybersecurity public awareness campaign implemented through a coalition of private companies, nonprofit government organizations, and academic institutions working together to increase the public's understanding of cyber threats and empowering Americans to be safer and more secure online, and whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of City of Brownsville's information, infrastructure, and economy. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in the, by the Charter of Said City and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate October as Cyber Security Month in Brownsville, Texas, and further encourage the residents to learn about cybersecurity and put the knowledge, that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. Done on this, the 50th day of October, 2019. And I'm presuming it's signed by everybody on the commission, because it's a missing part of it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and (cough) City Commissioners. As stated in the proclamation, cybersecurity is everyone's business, and we should all take a proactive steps to enhance cybersecurity at home and in the workplace. In national surveys conducted by NCSA between 2013 and 2014, it was found that 96% of Americans feel a personal responsibility to be safer and more secure online, but that some were unaware about what to do about it. The national message for 2019 is own it, secure it, protect it. In front of me is the city's team at Enterprise Applications, who work together to protect and secure the city's technology. They have been working behind the scenes for the last two months on cybersecurity and have personally updated 465 endpoints. However, they cannot do this alone and need all the city employees' help by continuing to remain vigilant against phishing attempts and continue to report any suspicious emails to our department. In addition, we will be conducting and continuing with employee security training in the near future. For the public, we encourage them to visit staysafeonline.org for more information, where they will find tip sheets in English and Spanish, a cybersecurity My Business link for small business owners, and if they want to be social this month, they can, by using the hashtag #BeCyberSmart or hashtag #CyberAware. Finally, the EA staff will be providing a detailed annual security report to our city manager with updates on what we've accomplished thus far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proclamation we have is for UTRGV Gear Up, Gladys Porter Early College High School. Can you please come up?
Hi, welcome. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, honoring and recognizing the UTRGV Gear Up Porter Early College High School program. Whereas Porter Early College High School's mission is to prepare students to be lifelong learners and responsible productive citizens in a global society. Whereas the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Gear Up program helps students become successful in middle and high school, and ultimately prepares them for the transition to post-secondary education. The Gear Up program has historically successfully assisted thousands of students to fulfill their college dreams. Whereas the Gear Up program closes the achievement gap by increasing the number of high school graduates. Whereas the Gear Up program uses STEM programs to enrich the students' learning, and whereas the Gear Up program shadows the students one year after graduation. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Said City, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby honor and recognize the UTRGV Gear Up Porter Early College High School program in Brownsville, Texas, and further encourage the residents to support the pursuit of post-secondary education for the students of Brownsville, Texas, to achieve their career and leadership goals, done on this, the 15th day of October, 2019. Thank you. Go Cowboys.
Next, we have the proclamation for Mr. Nolan Navarro. If you please come up.
So this next proclamation is very special. We have Nolan Navarro, aka Fish. For those of you that know about Nolan or follow him on social media, Nolan is one of Brownsville's own, and he has walked many a runway in New York Fashion Week, Milan Fashion Week, London Fashion Week. I know I'm forgetting like four other fashion weeks, right? He only does the, Brownsville Fashion Week, the most important of them all. They're all important, but, so we are so proud to have somebody from Brownsville, especially somebody who embraces their identity, and one thing that we find in this world is that we need to encourage each other to be ourselves and be what we want to be, and not put anybody in boxes and define what has to be or what could be. And I followed Nolan for so long, and I'm so proud of him. I feel like I'm his mama bear or something, because I have seen him go from a kid in Brownsville to somebody who is hanging around with Lady Gaga and jetting around the world. And you think I'm joking, but I'm not. Jetting to Lady Gaga's parties in California, and that's just incredibly awesome. So I will begin right now with a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Nolan Navarro. Whereas Nolan Navarro, aka Fish, was raised in Brownsville to Rodolfo and Esther Navarro and graduated from Hannah High School Early College in Brownsville, Texas, Nolan's greatest ambition is to redefine the meaning of femininity and masculinity and raise awareness for non-binary individuals. Non-binary gender identity is any gender identity that does not fall within the strict categories of either a man or a woman. Whereas, all children deserve to grow up in an inclusive community free of discrimination that supports lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT and non-binary people. Whereas Nolan Navarro, with the support of their family, pursued a modeling career and established themselves as a public relations and fashion industry professional. The fashion industry produces clothing, creates jobs, contributes to the global economy, and creates culture and self-expression. In 2018, after walking in the New York Fashion Week, Nolan Navarro appeared in Vogue Editor-in-Chief Anna Wintour's runway highlights video. Whereas, in July 2019, Nolan Navarro joined Lady Gaga's Haas Laboratories, beauty brand, as a non-binary model. Haas Laboratories is dedicated to the mission to spread kindness, bravery, and creativity, and by providing tools for self-expression and reinvention, and whereas on May 23rd, 2019, Nolan Navarro, aka Fish, headed to Brownsville's first Brownsville Fashion Week, a week-long celebration of local icons, talent, and resistance in fashion. Nolan is currently studying public relations degree at the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Said City, and on behalf of all of our citizens, encourage our community to celebrate individually, individuals, and inclusivity, inclusivity, I'm sorry, by being mindful and respectful of gender, queer, non-binary people who are. Done on this 15th day of October, 2019.
The City Commissioner? Would you please stand here?
Hello. So first and foremost, thank you for having me. So this has been a journey that I've been, you know, on since 2013, and, you know, being in front of you guys is just such an honor. I've been working so hard since I was 15 years old, and it's been a dream of mine to have a proclamation under my name and in the City of Brownsville. It's my favorite city in all of Texas and all of the US, and I can tell you, anywhere that I've been to, it doesn't compare to Brownsville. And being able to do what I do here makes it much more monumental and much more historical in a sense that I can be who I want to be with the support of the city, with the support of my family, and the support of the community. So I thank you very much, and I hope to pursue fashion the rest of my life, and if I, if I do it, I'm going to do it in the name of Brownsville. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have presentations. Appreciation presentation by the Civil Air Patrol.
Welcome, Dr. Joe. Just became a doctor.
Yeah, I just, my name's Colonel Randall. Can everyone hear me okay? All right. My name is Colonel Randall. I just wanted to take the opportunity to present an appreciation plaque to the City of Brownsville and also to the Airport Director, Mr. Walker. Since 1941, we've been here at Brownsville doing homeland security missions, support for our citizens, not only here in Texas and the City of Brownsville, but across the country. It's evolved to where we are today, flying 27,000 hours, putting our kids in the aircraft, doing our STEM, doing cyber. There's a lot of things that we do, we're still a very well-kept secret, but more information can be found out about us, along with our history here in Brownsville, on CAPBrownsville.org. Mr. Walker, in recognition of outstanding assistance to Brownsville Composite Squadron, Texas Wing, and the Civil Air Patrol National Training Center located at the RO, your dedication and desire to improve UU aviation, improve STEM awareness, advance Civil Air Patrol's missions and aerospace education, cadet programs, emergency services, brings great credit to Brownsville South Fighter Island International Airport, City of Brownsville, and the community, given this 15th day, October, 2019. Sure. Is it your district?
Sure, yes. Oh, do you want to go down?
And this is presented to the City of Brownsville, in recognition of outstanding assistance to Brownsville Composite Squadron, Texas Wing, and Civil Air Patrol since 1941. The city's dedication and desire to improve UU aviation, improve STEM awareness, advance Civil Air Patrol's mission in aerospace education, cadet programs, emergency services, brings great credit to civil leadership of the City of Brownsville and the community, given this date, 15th of October, 2019. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
At the airport, we'd just like to thank the Civil Air Patrol for giving us the opportunity to participate in their, in their program for training the cadets over the past summer. So they actually took them through a private pilot intensive program to make sure that they got the flight training they needed. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation will be by the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley, UTRGV.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you first of all for recognizing the UTRGV Gear Up program at Porter High School. It's such a wonderful program, Gear Up. We're always advocating for more and more Gear Up funds because we see the difference that it makes in the lives of students, and many students who otherwise would not get opportunities, so thank you for doing that this evening, and also for recognizing the importance of the cybersecurity. At UTRGV, we're actually working on a degree program right now in cybersecurity, so we, we love that the City of Brownsville is ahead of the trend and is already recognizing the importance of it. I'm Veronica Gonzalez, I'm Vice President for Government and Community Relations at UTRGV, and I wanted to make a couple of presentations this evening. We have two very different individuals joining us, actually three tonight. Chase Conk is our new Athletic Director. He was hired in August. He's been on the job about two months. He's the Vice President and Director of Athletics. He brings with him experience and a winning tradition to UTRGV, having served as the Vice Chancellor and Director of Athletics at the University of Arkansas at Little Rock since 2015. While he was there at the NCAA Division One level, he helped lead a resurgence of the athletic department, both on and off the playing fields, winning a combined 19 team and individual Sunbelt Conference Championships, highlighted by both the men and women's basketball teams reaching the second round of the NCAA tournament. Also while there, three Little Rock head coaches garnered Sunbelt Conference Coach of the Year honors, and nearly four dozen Little Rock student athletes were named all conference. Chase prioritizes student success, as we all do and we all should, and most of his students, student athletes graduate with a GPA of 3.0 or better. Chase is still new on the job, but he has some ideas on how he would like to rally the Valley, his slogan, and at games, and be a true partner to all the Valley with athletics. Chase and his wife Lisa have three daughters, twins Juliana and Sydney, who are seven, and Adeline, who's five. Allow me to introduce you to Chase Conk.
Thank you, Veronica, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, and very much appreciate the orange you're wearing this evening. I'll say that it was intentional, so...
Yes, it was.
It's actually TSC orange, sorry.
It was to celebrate both of you all.
Fair, fair, fair. Pleasure to be here. Veronica said, I'm seven weeks on the job, and it has been a exciting, fast-paced, but I can tell you, we are so looking forward to calling the Rio Grande Valley our new home. Five great years in Little Rock, and, but I tell you, our success, whether it was academically or it was championships, was about community support. And, and like Veronica said, rally the Valley, we're not just Edinburgh's team, we're not Harlingen's team, we're not just Donna's team, we're Brownsville's team, we're everywhere in between, and so we need that type of support, but we have to do our part. And, and I can tell you, as I stand here today, Mayor, I'm committed. I met with the city manager earlier, and we had a good conversation. We, we want creative, outside-the-box ideas, but we really feel like athletics can be a unifier for the, for the Rio Grande Valley. UTRGV has so many wonderful things, you saw some of it here this evening, you'll see more from some of my colleagues here this afternoon, but athletics can be a unifier, and we can use it to bring our campuses together, our students together, and our communities together. Our coaches are on board. Every two weeks right now, we're doing caravans here in the Brownsville area. We're bringing our student athletes and our coaches to campus, and we have to serve our students well here at our Brownsville campus. But we've had an exciting fall, we're playing at a very high level. As you well know, we're hosting teams from all across the country, we're playing at a very high level in the Western Athletic Conference, we're winning championships. Our baseball team last year defeated Texas Tech in Lubbock, Oklahoma State at home. Not only are we playing these teams, we're getting these teams to come to the Valley. And when athletics wins, I want the Rio Grande Valley to feel like they win, and I want to enhance our brand through Division One intercollegiate athletics. So count us in, and we want to be a good partner, and we want to be creative and do things first class, student athlete always first. Our GPA right now is, Athletics Cohort is a 3.18, which is remarkable, nearly 3,000 hours of community service, and our young people are certainly our most prized possession, and we take that very seriously. But at the same time, we want to have fun, and we want to win championships, and when you win, that's when you have fun. And you put all those things together, and you get a community and a region and a valley that supports our athletics enterprise, and we can have a lot of fun together. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you very much for your time this evening.
Appreciate it, thanks so much.
Good luck.
Thank you. Peace out, thank y'all.
Thank you, Chase. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Doctors Sarah and John Blangero. The Blangeros came to us in 2014 to establish the South Texas Diabetes and Obesity Institute. It's the largest research cluster of researchers at UTRGV, and with the majority of them located here in Brownsville on our campus, as is the institute. John and Sarah both received their doctoral degrees from Case Western Reserve University in Cleveland, Ohio, and then moved to San Antonio for their post-doctoral training. They remained in San Antonio for 27 years until the opportunity arose to create the South Texas Diabetes and Obesity Institute here in the Valley. They moved to UTRGV with a team of 22 researchers and 12 million in federal funding. They have since expanded to 52 researchers and have more than tripled the amount of external funding to 38.5 million to date and counting. Dr. Sarah Blangero is the director of the institute, her husband, Dr. John Blangero, is the director of the institute's Genomics Computing Center. Together, they lead teams in cutting-edge research that focus on diabetes, obesity, heart disease, ocular health, psychiatric disease, osteoporosis, and infectious disease of border health relevance. Please welcome Doctors John and Sarah Blangero.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you today. As Veronica said, we are mainly based in Brownsville. We have facilities across South Texas, in San Antonio, in Edinburgh, but our primary laboratories and our major resources are based here in Brownsville. The scientists in the STDI are conducting cutting-edge research on a broad range of diseases that are health problems for the Valley. The scientists are all geneticists by training, and so our overall approach has been to conduct large family studies of the determinants of risk for disease. And to do this, we collect data from many family members of large extended pedigrees and then do in-depth analyses to determine what genes are influencing risk for disease. Because once you know the genes that are influencing risk for disease, that information can be used to develop new drugs, new treatments, and preventions for disease, or can be used to identify existing drugs that can now be used for a new purpose. Our research has always focused on minority populations, and that's why the Valley was such an attractive place to move to. For nearly 30 years, we have worked with Mexican-American families from across South Texas in studies of heart disease, diabetes, and obesity. Over 3,500 members of 80 large families from South Texas have participated in these studies, all of which have been supported by the National Institutes of Health. The National Institutes of Health is the primary funder of biomedical research in the US, and the scientists in the STDI have been very successful in competing for this funding. Since arriving at the STDI five years ago, our faculty, as Veronica said, have generated over 38.5 million in NIH funding. And why are we so competitive for that funding? Well, we have great resources, including our 11,000 processor computer cluster that's based here in Brownsville, and our colony of laboratory opossums that's based here in Brownsville. And so I'll turn it over to the Director of the GCC to tell you more.
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of programmatic and infrastructure aspects that you might find interesting that are based right here in Brownsville. At our Genome Sequencing Center, we actually have more capacity for human genome sequencing than they have in the whole of San Antonio, so that's right here in Brownsville. If you remember, the first human genome took about 10 years and hundreds of million dollars to produce, and right now here in Brownsville, we can generate about one in a day for roughly about $600. So times have changed, and we're at the very forefront of this technology here in Brownsville. And as Sarah also mentioned, you have to make sense of that. There's about 6.8 billion bits of information in every human genome. Our studies typically involve thousands of individuals. We have to parse through all that data in order to find where the gold is in relation to disease risk, and we do that using a supercomputer cluster right here on the UTRGV campus. That is the largest in the world that's dedicated to human genomics. These aspects bring lots of new opportunities for students. We're developing a PhD program in human genetics that's going to be the first of its kind in the UT system, and we expect generations of students to be able to benefit from all the aspects, the infrastructure that we're laying down today. Another important area that we're doing here in, in Brownsville is we have a very large stem cell biology program. And this is a particularly interesting kind of stem cell usage in that we are making human tissues from blood cells. We can take a blood cell from any individual and generate liver tissue, cardiac tissue, pancreatic tissue, and this gives us a wonderful way to study lots of aspects of the pathogenesis and genetics of risk and diseases of relevance. For example, we're using this in our, one of our newest projects here in the Valley on fatty liver disease. And if you don't know it, fatty liver disease is a huge problem in this community, and it is the number one risk factor for liver cancer. And we are able to make liver tissue to better understand the underlying alterations and diseases. to better understand the underlying alterations and biology that lead to risk of this terrible, terrible disease. So, Brownsville is on the map scientifically, and we're just so delighted to have had the opportunity to come and base our research here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Semiannual Progress Report for Water and Wastewater Capital Improvements Plan and the Impact Fee Collections for January 2019 through June 2019 by Arcadis Design and Consultancy.
All right, thank you, and good evening Commissioners. My name is Robert Ryle. I'm with the engineering firm Arcadis, and I'm here this evening to present the findings of our Semiannual Progress Report for the Brownsville Public Utilities Board, Water and Wastewater Capital Improvements Plan, and Impact Fee Collections. We're looking at the period of January 1st of 2019 through June 30th for the first half of this calendar year. So, a quick agenda to our presentation. We're going to talk about projects first, both water and wastewater, projects that are eligible for impact fee funds. And then, we will talk about the fund itself, looking at the service units that have been generated, impact fees assessed over the first half of this year, and look at fund activity, the beginning fund balance, ending fund balance, and how the monies have accumulated. And then, lastly, an additional item that the Kayak has requested of us, which is a look forward, a forecast, if you will, of what projects the PUB is anticipating spending impact fee money on. So, we, we have a report of the next five years and where these impact fee monies are anticipated to be spent. So, this, this table shows a listing of water projects which are eligible for capital improvement fees. These are not all projects, not all water projects of the Brownsville PUB, but they're those that are eligible for water impact fees, and they total almost $35 million. Most of these projects are in the planning stage. A typical, typical life cycle of a project would be planning, design, construction. So, they are in the initial phases of, of majority of these projects. A little bit about the Water Impact Fee Fund. There have been no changes to the Land Use Assumptions Plan since we presented to you last. I do understand that this plan, the city is looking at updating this plan, which is required by Texas Chapter every five years. And the plan's about five years old, so it's appropriate to, to do that. The current impact fees were adopted in October of 2016. There's a different areas within the city of Brownsville for different impact fees. For Area 1, which is largely the urban downtown area, that fee for water service is $300 per equivalent service unit. And for Areas 2 and 3, it's $600 per equivalent. So, this is a list of wastewater projects. Again, those projects that are eligible for impact fees. They total almost $38 million, and similar to what we saw in water, a lot of these projects are in the initial planning stages. The Wastewater Impact Fee Fund, again, no lane, no changes to the Land Use Assumptions Plan. The current impact fees for wastewater are $500 per equivalency for Area 1 and $1,000 per equivalency for Areas 2 and 3. So, this is a summary of the service units that have connected to the system in the first half of this year. The water system has seen 200 new connections to the water system, which have generated almost $150,000 in water impact fees assessed. Similar information for the wastewater system. We've seen 205 connections to this system, which has resulted in just over $230,000 in wastewater impact fees assessed. This is a summary of the Impact Fee Fund. As of January 1st of this year, the fund was just shy of $7 million. Over the first six months of the year, just over $400,000 in impact fee funds have been collected. Some of that money has been spent. There's also interest earned of about $100,000, which results in an ending balance as of June 30th of almost $7.5 million. So, as we had mentioned earlier, this is a summary of, of how Public Utilities is anticipating spending these impact fee monies. This, the list of projects, this, this figure shows a list of projects and then the anticipated impact fee funding by year, not necessarily representing the full project cost, but just the portion that's anticipated to be funded by impact fees. So, anticipating about $11 million of impact fee-funded projects over the next five years. Obviously, that's more than the $7.5 million I just mentioned that the account has in, in terms of its balance, but there are fees that are expected to be accumulated over the next five years, so that, that makes up the difference. And then, lastly, this is a summary, a forecast of the impact fee fund balance, again, starting at $7.5 million, anticipating or forecasting collecting about $800,000 a year in impact fee funds. And then, spending that money, again, the same as what we provided in the previous slide, resulting in an ending fund balance of, of still over $800,000. So, anticipating spending a lot of this money over the next five years on growth-related projects. So, with that, I'll, I'll see if there are any questions.
The CIP portions of this coincide with what we're talking, what we've discussed earlier. Is that correct, Noah? The CIP?
In terms of...
The amounts that are being spent on the Capital Improvement Plan, like for example, there's 1.2 million in 2020, 2.15 in 2021. Is that, does that kind of coincide with what we've discussed, or is this separate?
We coordinate the work.
Okay.
But they have their own respective CIP.
Okay.
But some of this will overlap with work that we have, primarily streets work. So, we do make sure that we are collaborating, so we don't duplicate work or, you know, do a street and then have, have it cut, you know, cut by the utilities to run a water line after. So, from that perspective, we are working together, but they do have an independent CIP. A lot of it does overlap, though.
Thanks.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
So, at the end of the five years, we're going to have about $850,000 in our fund balance. What are we going to do after that in terms of building back up our fund balance so we can fund our capital improvement?
Right, no, that's an excellent question. So, so I understand Brownsville's forecast goes five years, is why it ends in 2024. But it's expected that there would still be funds accumulated beyond this point. One of the, one of the things about an impact fee fund is that it's restricted funds. You can only spend this money on growth-related projects. And in many cases, I believe this is the case with Brownsville, it's generally prudent to spend that money first, right? Let's spend the restricted money before we would spend unrestricted money that we can do anything with, or before we would, we would go out for debt. So, so my understanding is that's the philosophy, is to spend the restricted money first before we would, we would spend other, other monies that have more availability for, for other things. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks.
Next, we have the Public Commentary. I do have Mr. Albert Elbetis. If you would please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'm Albert Pettis. I'm the President of the Brisk and Pettis Insurance Agency here in town. And I'm here to address the group medical insurance that is currently written with TML, Texas Municipal League. And I first would like to say that TML is an excellent, excellent organization that does a lot of good for its members, all the fellow cities. TML has what is called an inter-local agreement. I believe that y'all are all familiar with this, which means that y'all literally do not have to bid out your insurance program because it's pulling it together. But that does not necessarily mean that it is the best value of the dollar. If you eliminate the competition, you don't know what you got. So, I'm here before the City Commission today, first of all, to address, I've appeared before this commission for the last 12 years, two past mayors, Tony, Tony Martinez, and Eddie Trevino, pleading to bid out this insurance program. And it came to a no avail that it would not. It was resisted by the commission, and it has also been resisted by the administration. They enjoyed just renewing the policy with TML, not knowing if it is the best value. So, I'm here today to ask you to consider bidding it out. Other political subdivisions in this area did bid out. For example, PUB just went out to their third annual bid, and Blue Cross Blue Shield was awarded the bid last night. TML was actually a bidder. Blue Cross had a better product, better price, they won the bid. So, how do we know here that TML is offering you the best price, best premium, best coverage? So, I know this commission really is trying to do the best and is doing the best for its employees, for both its non-union workers and its union workers through tight end with the collective bargaining agreement. So, I do want to address, please bid it out. Also, please include agents. Some political subdivisions, for example, PUB is not allowing agents to participate. I don't know why. I actually do, and that's another conversation. But please allow agents to participate because agents actually bring value and help to bring down the barriers that are sometimes placed between the bidders and the insurance, or the insurance companies and the, you know, the general public that is trying to buy the policies. I would like to thank you for this opportunity, and I wish you all the best. Good evening to you.
I would ask City Management if you could probably bring that before the commission because that's something we consistently hear from our staff members. Their healthcare matters.
It's, it's too nuanced of a conversation to have here in a couple of minutes, but we can make sure that we follow up with the commission on what we have. I mean, we have a self-funded plan that's different than what you call fully insured when you go out to the market. So, we just, we can do a work session on what we have in place.
And we are working on strategies to try and be more innovative and try and save some costs down the road, so...
I think that's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, we, we had a, just a quick, we had a meeting today on an assessment regarding what it would cost the city to be fully insured versus self-insured. So, we'll bring it to you all in a work session and in that, we can also answer the question that was posed today.
I think it would be important when we do that to include the insurance community as well.
In what, in the discussion?
No, just in any, yeah. So, they can under, we're being transparent.
Sure, yeah, what we can do is make, they're welcome to attend. I think a work session would be a great platform for them to be educated on the inner workings of our plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, for the record, we did have Mr. Jared Garcia sign up for public comment, but earlier, before the meeting, he didn't mention to us that he'll speak at the next City Commission meeting. So, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And we have a work session, creating a green Brownsville adoption of the 2015 International Energy Conversation Code.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Rick Boskus, Planning Director. Seventh day on the job, so bear with me if I make a mistake here on my presentation. We do have experts here, though, tonight that are going to work with you to review and consider updating our Energy Conservation Code. There is no urgency in this matter. If the commission determines you're not ready to move forward today, we certainly have time to review the code and come back with alternative implementation strategies. So, once you hear the presentation, if you're ready to move forward, we certainly will take that direction and move forward with code adoption should there be some concerns on either the commercial or the residential side, or depending on the size of the structures. We certainly are willing to work with the commission for a implementation that you're comfortable with. Pat?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. The Planning and Redevelopment Department would like to offer this work session, creating a green Brownsville adoption of the 2015 International Conservation Code. My name is Georgina Lopez, and I'm a Platoon Development Specialist with the department. I'd like to just wish you all a happy Energy Awareness Month. On the agenda today, why adoption of the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code? About the code, what does the IECC regulate? Brownsville's building code upgrade and associated benefits? Significant changes 2009 to 2015 IECC residential and commercial provisions? Ordinance draft review, public outreach, proposed ordinance and change amendments, proposed timeline and adoption, and we'll conclude with a question-answer session. The most important thing we want to do this evening is answer the question, why? Why is the city going through the process of adopting the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code? Well, let me tell you. This is a state mandate, and we want to comply with state law. We are working towards compliance of the Texas Administrative Code, Title 34, Part 1, Chapter 19, Subchapter E, Rule 19.53, Building Energy Efficiency Performance Standards. Back in June of 2015, Governor Greg Abbott signed the House Bill 1736, which dealt with energy efficiency of single-family homes, effective September 1st, 2016. So, this meant Chapter 11 of the International Residential Code, IRC, is adopted as an energy code for single-family residences and duplexes. Soon after that, there was a push for energy efficiency of other building types, effective November of 2016. The International Energy Conservation Code, IECC, adopted for all other residential, commercial, and industrial construction. As you all know, part of the responsibilities of the Planning and Redevelopment Department is to facilitate the adoption of the nationally-recognized building-related codes. The city of Brownsville is beginning the process for updating building planning regulations to ensure that they reflect the community's vision for future development of Brownsville. The energy code is one of them. So, let me give you a little background on the code. It is a model code drafted by the International Code Council, ICC. Back in 2009, if states wanted to receive stimulus funds under the American Recovery Act and the Investment Act, they had to adopt the IECC 2009 as a prerequisite. Adoption of the 2012 IECC was gradual since it only rendered a 15% energy efficiency performance increase compared to the 2009 edition. Although there are 77 changes from the 2015 version, only six actually increased energy savings, according to the U.S. Department of Energy Technical Analysis. Commercial buildings obtained a 1% better energy impact compared to the 2012 IECC. Nevertheless, energy savings are always welcome, and the city of Brownsville aspires to benefit from this code upgrade. Individuals are affected by building codes every day in their lives in terms of safety, health, general welfare. But this code in particular regulates, one, the design and construction of energy-efficient buildings, which means exterior envelope insulation are values, window and door U-factors, and solar heat gain coefficients, duct insulation, lighting and power efficiency, water distribution, insulation. It also regulates insulation performance of energy-efficient systems, such as heating ventilation, mechanical, lighting, water heating, power usage for appliances and building systems. All new construction and reconstruction projects will be affected by this change. This code stresses the importance of performance. Currently, the city is under the 2009 IECC. Of course, there are benefits to this code update. More efficient buildings reduce the need for electric utilities to build new power lines, plants, and transmission distribution lines. So, this helps slow the increase in utility rates for all customers, which means more cash flow to spend on locally-produced and sold products and services in citizens' pockets. With tighter construction and management of ventilation, you avoid infiltration of dust, mold spores, or harmful fumes. Properly managing ventilation positively affects the health and comfort of occupancy, occupants, and the durability of the home or building itself. So, this means improved indoor air quality. Up-to-date energy codes will reduce greenhouse gas and other harmful emissions from electric and natural gas use. So, that means it's good for the environment. The Insurance Service Office, ISO, provides insurance risk analysis to the insurance industry. And based on this assessment, a city's insurance risk rating may rise or fall, affecting hazard insurance rates for all buildings, buildings built in the city. Adoption and enforcement of code, current codes will help the city maintain a good ISO rating and keep insurance rates low for its citizens. That equals to savings on insurance premiums. So, there's a spear website, the South Central Partnership for Energy Efficiency as a Resource. And there's a list where there's, the city has adopted, have adopted the current code. And we'd like to be on that list. The arrow points to where Brownsville's names would be. We aspire to be current and join the other 216 cities in Texas. We hope this is a start to a community-wide outreach effort in support of advanced, sustainable building and energy-saving initiatives. The next slide shows costs and savings comparing the 2015 IRC, IECC, to the 2009 IRC, IECC, which we are currently under. Brownsville falls within the Climate Zone 2. Brownsville falls within the Climate Zone 2, and as you can see, the initial cost incurred due to the new codes is offset by the lifecycle energy savings, 30 years. So incremental construction cost is 1,920, while the lifecycle cost savings is $5,774. So next, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Jason Vandiver, Energy Code Program Manager with Spear, South Central Partnership for Energy Efficiency as a Resource. He has been incredibly helpful throughout this entire process, answering all my questions and reviewing countless drafts of the proposed ordinance. He will be giving us an overview of the significant changes between 2009 and 2015 I E C C residential and commercial provisions.
Thank you, Georgina. Thanks for having me, I appreciate it, commission and mayor. It's really not that different from the '09 to the '15. Residentially, the main difference will be currently you're doing a duck blaster test, and then now, and with the '15, you do a duck blaster and a blower door test. As Georgina mentioned, it does add to the cost, I mean, $2,000 to the cost of a house. Most people finance their houses over 30 years. You're looking at $7 a month on the mortgage payment to save $20 a month on your utility bill. It pays for itself literally from day one. They rearranged the book a little bit, changed the definitions here or there. There was a new compliance path added residentially, the E R I path, probably more familiar, known as the HERS score path. One nice thing about the energy code, it is super flexible. You can get there a variety of different ways, and those paths, including one extra, exist in the 2015 code. Residentially, there's nothing outlandish. The walls are still R-13, the ceiling goes from R-30 to R-38. I mean, it's really fairly insignificant for Climate Zone 2. Up the road a few hundred miles, Climate Zone 3, different story. Climate Zone 2, not so much. It's fairly simple. Lift, which way am I going with this?
You live in Climate Zone 2, according to the map, no?
You do live in Climate Zone 2. I was just saying, in Climate Zone 2, it's, there's really very little difference as far as building thermal envelope cost. It's a whole lot easier lift in Climate Zone 2 versus the Climate Zone 3. It's, I mean, many of the surrounding communities have been on the '15 since September 1st of 2016 as mandated by state law, and they're not, they're not having issues. I know there's plenty of third-party energy inspectors and raiders and testers in the valley. I know several of them personally. So residentially, I don't think it'll be much of a change for most of the affiliated building practices in the area. And then commercially, a little, there's a few more changes commercially. It's a lot in the lines of with sensors, technology. For instance, like these windows here, if these were open, these lights would need to be controlled by a daylight sensor. A daylight sensor is a few dollars. You install it, when the sun's beating through the windows, it knows to shut off the lights. So it's a bunch of technology controls, as you see on the slide, commissioning. Blower door tests, not really in commercial, because you can do a visual inspection as well. I'm sorry, do that one more time. Gotcha. Thank you. And we've already done a, we've, Georgina's been really proactive on this. She's notified the entire building community. I came and did a multi-hour presentation with a workshop. One nice thing about Spear, the company I work for now, is a, is a nonprofit, you know, if any of your builders or developers or anybody, it's like, you know, I know the building department's really busy, and I'm happy to answer the questions for the folks, and The Price is Right, it's always free. I walked somebody through a comm check today. It's what I do. It's a nice thing about what I do, I'm able to help people for free, energy code-related. That's, that's, that's the main changes. I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the others. Yes, ma'am.
So how do you trigger this code? So if I have, say, an existing code, and I want to add a room or, say, a closet in the garage to make it into a room, whatever, how do you, how do you then trigger this?
Okay, that would fall under the existing buildings chapter. I'm a, I like to say I'm a recovering building official. I was a building official prior to, prior to this. And basically, the way you treat something like that is, if you're wanting to do a little addition on your house, there's one path through the code called the prescriptive path. The prescriptive path is R-13 in the wall, R-38 in the ceiling, R-8 duck work. So you put a R-13 bat in your wall, you blow R-38 in the ceiling, you put in LEDs or CFLs, and you comply. It's that simple.
But then, would it only apply to the new addition, or they not have to do it on the house?
No, 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 no. You would never, ever have to go back and retrofit anything you don't touch. Now, on the commercial side, there is a caveat. If you, say, you're changing the occupancy on an old, uninsulated shell that was never heated or cooled, and you're going to turn that into a restaurant and cool it and heat it, and it's, well, once you increase the fossil fuel energy use, you have to bring the shell up. But residentially, it's typically not an issue at all commercially, and the city is looking at some amendments on the existing buildings, some exemptions, you know, 150 square feet's exempt, to kind of lessen the stringent C on existing buildings. Yes, ma'am.
Right, and I think that's important to talk about what those amendments are. So, we're going to want to talk about some of those, Georgina, talk about some of those amendments, those amendments to historical exemptions, just to do things, to add to the conversation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vandiver, for that overview.
And is there a threshold, you can talk about the percentage threshold, when it, of the addition, and also the exemptions for historic preservation buildings?
But just, right, it's, they're exempt, according to what I read.
The historic buildings are exempt, that's correct.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Vandiver. Okay, so we have had public outreach, we had two workshops, and we had 61.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry, about that? Okay, let's see, okay, that's, sorry about that.
You can also lower the podium if you need to.
The podium, that's right. Maybe that's better. Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you better.
Okay. So we did conduct two public outreach workshops on September 18th and 25th to inform individuals of the reasons for the code update, benefits that come along with this upgrade, and discuss the proposed ordinance and change amendments. Attendance for the workshop consisted of 61 individuals stemming from realtors, homeowners, developers, builders, contractors, designers, architects, engineers, energy raiders, and city staff. Feedback from the public was also received through a survey, mainly paper format. Comment period ended September 30th, 2019, with a participation of 13 stakeholders. So in order for a code upgrade, an ordinance has been developed. After much research in in-house staff meetings and public outreach, we have a draft. Since Texas is a home rule state, this allows local jurisdictions to make amendments to the energy code, as long as we do not make it less stringent. We would like to share with you some of the key highlights to the proposed ordinance and change amendments. We have incorporated all the recommendations from the Spear website, as noted. In 2009, historic buildings were exempt, so in the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, there's now an actual chapter, Chapter 5, that deals with existing buildings. After much research and comparisons with other cities, we have amended Section C 501.6 and R 501.6 to keep historic structures exempt. Just to be clear, this is the definition for historic buildings. Any building or structure that is one or more of the following: listed or certified as eligible for listing by the State Historic Preservation Officer or the Keeper of the National Register of Historic Places in the National Register of Historic Places; two, designated as historic under an applicable state or local law; and thirdly, certified as a contributing resource within the National Register listed, state-designated or locally-designated historic Incorporated into the ordinance are relief measures when it comes to small, commercial, and residential alterations, repairs, and change of occupancy or use. We are proposing that these types of projects, not more than 150 square feet in area, to be exempt from testing, air barrier test, duck leakage test. We are proposing amending the definition of Registered Design Professional to include only the following individuals with these certifications: Certified Building Commission Professional, Certified Commissioning Technician, Commissioning Process Management Professional, Building Systems Commissioning, Licensor of Registered Professional Engineer in the State of Texas and listed in the Texas Board of Professional Engineers P E roster under the following branches only: Architectural, Electrical, Computer, or Mechanical, Registered Architect, and other Certified Energy Commissioning Professionals as approved by the building official. Lastly, we also added the definition for Registered Design Professional under the residential provisions. Home energy rating system, Certified Home Energy Raider, Certified Field Inspector, Certified Building Analyst, or other Certified Energy Commissioning Professionals as approved by the building official. This is our proposed timeline. So research started back in May of 2019 to the present date. Online survey was posted on the city Brownsville website, August 27, 2009, I mean, 2019. Workshop number one took place September 18th. The second workshop took place September 25th. Public comment period ended September 30th. Tonight's work session here at City Commission, public hearing and first reading, November 5th, 2019, second reading in action, November 12, 2019, effective date, November 12, 2019. Transition period for residential and commercial construction, four months, four to six months, possibly from November 2019 through March, or possibly May. So we'd like to get your feedback on that.
We want to talk about the four to six month transition, in terms of what that would mean for a building public when it's submitted.
Sure. So if there's reservation on part of the commission, what I would like to do is look at the issue from two different perspectives, the commercial side and then the residential side. So in adopting the code, and if the effective date on commercial applies to corporations that are coming to Brownsville that have a national presence, they're designing at the national level, this is probably not a shock to them, they're already probably designing their buildings under the updated code, Starbucks, McDonald's, those designers are used to this code, and it's being implemented across the state and other states as well. So on the commercial side, if the council has some reservation, perhaps we would set a requirement so that we don't catch the mom and pops in the code adoption in the next four to six months. You could have a nine to 12 month implementation strategy on commercial projects, less than a certain square footage, maybe less than 1,500 square feet. Those individuals would be given more time to come into the design and the permitting process under the new code, give them a year, give them longer if the commission had some reservations. On the residential side, there's probably a threshold for cost of construction as well. If we're worried about affordable housing, perhaps those homes that are $200,000 and less, they would come into compliance with the new energy code out six to 12 months, and maybe homes over 200, you know, they would comply within the next four to six months, as recommended by the staff. So there's flexibility in the implementation by the type, the construction type. We don't necessarily have to adopt the code and it becomes effective in the next four to six months. We can, we can cut it up and do it to where the commission's comfortable with adoption.
Rick, I have a question. On the commercial aspect of it, existing businesses, will they have an option, or can they be grandfathered in, or do they have to comply with this if it passes?
So can they be grandfathered if they're coming in for a expansion, an existing commercial structure, and they want to expand?
Or they already exist, and they're not going to do anything to it? They're fine.
Then the code would be.
New construction or modifying their current building, then they have to modify their whole building, not just what they're going to be adding?
No, just, just the expansion.
Okay.
I have a question. Is the adoption of this code mandatory?
Yes, as of September 1st, 2016.
That's what it sounds like.
So we don't have a choice.
Well, we can tweak it.
Every home built, permitted after September 1st of 2016 by state law, the builders are legally liable to have built those homes to the 2015.
Okay, so why are we able to just pick and choose what we want out of the code? In other words, we're creating exemptions because we're trying to take the restrictiveness and make it easier, not harder. As a matter of fact, is this part of the Fries and Nichols evaluation of our codes, or is there, this the only energy code, or is this the energy conservation code, and there's an energy code? What's the relationship here to the work that Fries and Nichols is doing?
From what I recall, actually, Dawn Ward picked this up when she was reviewing some of our stuff, because I remember she mentioned that in one of our, well, in one of our meetings, she mentioned that this is one of the things we need to do, is come into compliance with the 2016, 2015 code.
Okay, so that's what I'm wondering, is, is this part of their effort, or is this something different?
This, I understand, this started prior to the execution of the contract with Fries and Nichols as part of a separate.
Why are they telling us, then, that that's part of the work they're going to do?
No, they did review this work. Dawn did look at these amendments and has been working with staff on this. However, the, it was because we were out of compliance, it was, it had been initiated of the research prior to her even coming on. Because, you know, some cities.
Then I'm going to go back to my question. Why do we get to pick only parts of it, and we don't have to implement the whole code? Because you're saying that we have, we're responsible now under the whole code, or the builders are.
I think we're saying that the codes in general can include amendments, and so there's, you are complying with the whole code, except that you're making it, you're right sizing it for Brownsville. And in that situation, you can include certain amendments to the code to right-size it for your community. And that's what I'm understanding most communities can do, right-size it for the community.
That's exactly correct. Now, we're Brownsville and one of the affected counties.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
Brownsville is able to, so the energy code and the energy conservation code are the same code, to answer that question. And Georgina showed the list of counties in Texas earlier, and there were 24 blue ones. Well, if you were one of those blue ones, you couldn't make amendments that made it less stringent. But Brownsville, technically, by state law, you have to adopt the 2015 energy code, but you can right-size it for Brownsville. You can give mom and pop shops that 150 square feet break. You can make amendments to it that make it not as stringent as published. Texas being a home rule state, you can typically amend the codes as works for your community, whether it be materials, processes, or whatever it may be. You know, certainly you wouldn't, in my opinion, wouldn't want to amend it such that the, you know, you mentioned the $200,000 homes and less, well, those are the people that can least afford a high utility bill. And so, you know, there's a fine line there to where you amend it, to where it doesn't work.
They may not be able to afford complying with these codes when they want to build their house. So that, we're trying to make things easier for people.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's why I asked first, if it was mandatory. So it's good to know that we can amend it, but we're trying to make it easier and less expensive for people to operate here, commercially or residentially.
Absolutely. And total cost of ownership has to be considered, more than just first cost, of course.
So we use a consultant with the city on developing what provisions to follow, or was that done in-house?
Half and half. Some of those amendments were from our website. All of those amendments that were taken from our website at zero cost. They're strictly clarifying amendments, they don't add any stringency whatsoever.
Are you consulting with them?
Yes.
Is there a contract involved in that?
No, it's free.
You're doing it for free?
Yes.
Is there, is there some follow-up that you're going to do with the city on this?
I'll come down once a month and train your builders, I'll meet people on site, I'm happy to do whatever you need.
Will you be consulting with the city on the city's own compliance with the 2015 code?
Be happy to. I mean, whatever y'all need, I'm happy to provide.
So we really appreciate the work that you're doing, first of all, thank you. And just to reiterate to the public, it's very similar, and I feel, and I had my home redone to be more energy efficient. And the way it was explained to me was, you can drive a 1992 car and not have a payment, but you're going to be paying for the repairs, and you're going to be paying for a tremendous amount of gasoline. And you can get a newer car that's more energy efficient, and it costs you a lot less in the long run, because you're not buying an air compressor, you're not buying, you know, all kinds of transmission and time chains and all kinds of crazy things that happen. So it's very comparable to homes and cars. They don't last forever, we have hurricanes, we have storms, we have all kinds of things happen to our homes, glass, the standards change, wiring, insulation, it lowers down, there are all kinds of things. And so I take home buying very serious, and have a $600 light bill. So I understand what these codes do, and how we can better prepare our homes for the rising costs of electricity.
Just real quick, on the, on the home front, adding that $2,000 cost to a 2,000-square-foot house, if it adds $7 a month to your mortgage, but takes $20 a month off your utility bill, is that house actually more expensive? Number one. And then two, by federal statute, all of the energy code amendments from energy code addition to energy code addition by federal statute have to be analyzed by the Pacific Northwest National Lab for cost effectiveness. And all of the 2015 commercial provisions have been deemed cost-effective, and that's on a 30-year line. And that's on a 30-year lifecycle of a building. I'm assuming you expect your buildings to last a lot longer than 30 years. Homes, it's a no-brainer. From your first month, you're saving an extra $13 a month that you can spend in your community. So.
And that's backed up by the studies that you're talking about?
Yes. Now, independent, third-party, I mean, it's not, not studies at my company.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean that. Just that there's some documentation or some backing for your figures that you're throwing out there.
Yeah, because there'll be some pushback initially, so if we could somehow justify that, it would help a lot. I'm sure that's helpful.
We can provide that on our website. I think we already have some of those studies on our website. We can write on the website. We could also do a transition period, whether it's by, I mean, we can say it's a six-month implementation or nine months. I mean, that's the whole point of this, to get your feedback in terms of, you know, what, should we just treat everybody the same and just have a six to nine month implementation? Or should we do it depending on price point? I mean, we just want to make sure that, we want to educate. And it's wonderful having you as a resource and also, you know, making as easy as educational to implementation as possible, that's why we're here.
I definitely do think we need to look at the price points and at least be more understanding of those that may be in more difficult economic positions, as we learned yesterday, just because people are living in Brownsville, they may not obviously have access to your website and find out that it's being implemented online, right? So, I don't know how you're reaching out to different parts of the community or how this was expressed.
So, it looks like there's different aspects of the code, which are the technical aspects with those R things that you're throwing out that we don't know what they are. And then there's the ability to amend, to customize it. But then there was one part you're talking about, increasing the qualifications of the people that are able to operate under that code, right? Because you're, I saw a whole list of new qualifications. So, who's that going to exclude in our community who's not qualified according to your list? I think you should look at that and make sure that it doesn't disqualify our local contractors and make them ineligible to operate under this code. And that's very important because you're adding a whole slew of qualifications that our locals aren't going to have, probably.
Well, we'll go ahead and look at that. We'll look at also reaching out to the public in informal ways, not digital, we talked about the digital divide.
Yeah, right.
And then maybe come back with evaluation recommendations. If that valuation, you want it to be, you know, rooted down, we could look at reduction. I mean, this is a point in the workshop to get your feedback so we can come back and give you feedback. I'm sorry, you want to go on?
So, my concern is, I have, I'm going to present a scenario. I have a home that's valued under, a little under $80,000 and I want to go in and add another room or expand a room, right? And, but I've only budgeted $10,000 because that's all I can do. And so, once I go and draw up my plans and stuff and you tell me, well, with this modernization and then all this stuff, it's going to come out to be 12, 14,000, it's more. Well, now I can't do it. So, then is that going to warrant, is that going to trigger like an inspection? Because, well, my house is not compliant on all these other things. And so, I'm wondering, can this lead to something that's even detrimental to someone who's seeking to improve but is limited in their budget as to how much they can spend in their home at one time?
It wouldn't limit it at all. Any existing construction, any wall system, mechanical system, lighting system, anything that's not touched, doesn't have to be brought up to code. The only thing that would have to be new, and along those same lines, you know, you've budgeted $10,000 for your little expansion of your house, well, if you can't afford to put shingles on it, because that's just going to put you at $1,500, well, then it's going to rain in the house. And the R13 that I threw out, the R13 is the least expensive wall bat that you can buy, Lowe's or Home Depot. That's all that's required in the wall. R38 is 12 inches of insulation in the ceiling. It's very minimal. For Climate Zone 2, there is nothing difficult about it whatsoever. There's multiple compliance pass through it. The nice thing about, the window manufacturers are way ahead of the game. And so, any window that you buy is going to be X percent above code. So, the nice thing about the energy code, if you get a little better windows in part of your house, well, you can do a little less ceiling insulation if you want. Or it's completely tradable throughout. So, if there's a special on windows, you can get a little better window and cut your costs on ceiling insulation. Now, doing that res check or something, and like you mentioned, worrying about the folks that might not be able to, they're not familiar with how to do these things and, you know, city staff might not have the time or resources to hold their hands through, I've literally gotten on FaceTime with people and looked at their computer screens and helped them through these processes. I mean, there's people that are available for free to help them out, me being one of them. And ultimately, I think a lot of times, residentially, in my experience, being a building official for a bunch of years, is the really low-income folks that are doing job, that's not, a lot of times isn't permitted or inspected. A lot of that probably won't change in all reality. It's going to be the new construction. And like they mentioned, I mean, the brand-new Target or Starbucks or anything like that going in, when you've got some out-of-state developer that's never going to pay the utility bill and is going to stick mom and pop owners with these 2009 building thermal envelopes when the utility bills are 20% more than they should be for the life of that building, they don't care, they're out of state, they never pay. It really doesn't make a lot of sense commercially. Residentially, working with these folks and that list of the qualifications you mentioned, that can be relegated to just the commissioning process. I mean, there's a variety of ways to get around that, to whereas, you know, the local contractor that wants to turn in a comp check on a small little new commercial strip, a little 1,500 square foot or something, you can make it so that they could do that themselves. You can do a comp check in 35 minutes yourself with just a simple set of plans.
Has the outreach already occurred with the local contractors?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went to one of those sessions at the library. I went to one of those sessions at the library.
What was the feedback?
We said there were 61 stakeholders. Were most of those contractors?
There were several contractors. Sorry. Okay. Let's see. One of the questions that we had on our survey was, would you like to save money on utilities even though it means incurring upfront costs? And all the answers on the 13 stakeholders, and they responded yes. Some of the comments also stated, they'd like to see incentives for building Energy Star certified homes, you know, maybe getting in touch with our local utility companies such as P U B, Magic Valley, A E Key.
I think P U B also already offers, but it's for commercially, right?
They do. We just would like to work with them a little bit closer to make sure we promote those incentives.
That doesn't necessarily answer Commissioner Niese's question, though. I think he was asking specifically about contractors being involved in these meetings.
And plus, that's a loaded question. Everybody would like to have that, but that doesn't mean, do they know what it's going to take to get there? You know, they're the ones that are going to be affected. So, asking some question like that doesn't get there.
Yes, we understand that. And we'd also ask them to write their email down so we can go ahead and contact them if we provide more workshops in terms of informational instruction and checklist.
You have to let them know exactly what the cost differential is going to be, what they're going to need for certifications to even be able to do it. Because some of them probably won't be able to do this, depending on what qualifications you try to get us to pass. So, it's regulatory overreach is what I'm worried about.
Okay.
And we're trying to reduce that.
Right. So, Commissioner, what we're going to do is we're going to have additional workshops and work sessions, just like our code rewrite, we've had a list of 250 stakeholder emails with your code rewrite. We'll reach out more and do more educational workshops. We will look at that comp, yeah, comp contract and reduce that down as well. So, we will look at making it less regulatory and get more feedback. And then we can report back to you all as to how many developers and stakeholders have come to the meetings and just get more outreach and before we come back to you. But your feedback is important now we know what we need to look into more closely and then to come back to you with some of that.
One of the best ways would be to make a comparison.
Right.
This section A is now section, this is going to mean that this is going to change and it's going to affect you this way.
Okay.
So, that, to me, would be the best approach. So, they know to compare the provisions that are affecting them.
Absolutely.
And personally, I'd like to see some recommendations on cost points, certain areas like 150,000 or less, 1,500 square feet or less, like you suggested, something like that, that's really going to help offset some of these costs.
Right. And I think to Commissioner Golonski's point is also give an example. Example, if I were to add 150 square feet and it is, what are the different types of, maybe we can even go through an exercise of that, what would that look like?
Well, because for the home builder, they'll always recover their cost in the new construction. But if the homeowner who already has their money invested in it and that they want to maybe do an upgrade or something, my concern is that if they go into your office wanting to do something and then it becomes cost prohibitive, well, have they triggered an inspection and then, well, they're not compliant on this, this, and that. And so, now it just became a whole new problem.
I think it's also important, I agree with everything they said, but I also want people to know the cost of what their light bill would be if they did these certain things versus what your light bill is going to be so you can see in the long run. Because I've had this done to my home and it really did save a lot of money. I'm an advocate for it.
Yeah, but you're, you're in a different price point than a lot of people.
Yeah. And with the scenario that you're mentioning, Commissioner Golonski, I know that that's going to come up where somebody's going to think it's going to cost X amount of dollars to fix something, then they're going to open Pandora's box, realize that they need to comply with other things, not have the money to do it, and then be stuck. So, I don't know whether there's going to be any penalty provisions for non-compliance once you've requested a permit, but look at that carefully because that's going to affect a lot of people.
Right. And I think some of that is giving the transition period. So, you know, I think what we have to do is plenty of outreach to them and then also give them a timeframe because they would be exempt. I mean, if they came in, if we adopted it and came in for a month, they would be exempt.
Well, ideally, that's great, but not everybody's going to want to replace their window the next nine or 10 months or 12 months, whatever, right? It's just going to come as it's needed. But I just want to be sympathetic to that scenario if possible.
We will be. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Next, we have consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have the public hearings. Public hearing number one, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-015-S to allow an apartment and apartment use in general retail H for the rear 39 feet of Lot 14, Block 58, original town site located at 409 East 13th Street.
This first case is an S P. Mark Vega is going to make the presentation and if there's any questions, we'll both take them.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. So, this applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an apartment on the second floor. You guys are probably familiar with Galleria 409. This property has 0.0448 acres and it is fronting 13th Street. Here's an aerial view of the property. This is a zoning map. As you can see, the predominant zoning is general retail. This is a 200-foot buffer map. There were 18 mailouts and zero written opposition. This is the proposed site plan. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. P N Z did support the specific use permit to allow an apartment in general retail H, 4 C H, with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number two, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-038-CO to rezone from light retail F to light retail H for Lot 47, Block 3, Fourth Norah subdivision, section 7, located at 5511 Achievement Avenue with a conditional overlay.
Okay, so this applicant is basically looking to change the area district of the property. If you recall, this item was presented on August 20th. It was denied by the commission and it was requested for, to come back as a reconsideration of vote. So, just to recap, the current zoning for this property is light retail F. The request from the applicant is to rezone to light retail H with the conditional overlay. This property has 1.6 acres and the proposed use is apartments and it is fronting Achievement Avenue. Here's an aerial of the property. This is the zoning map. As you can see, the area predominates as dwelling. This is a 200-foot buffer map. There were 31 mailouts. We do have here saying it's a zero written opposition, but we did receive written opposition submitted to City Secretary on Friday. These are the results. We had results of 11%, which does not meet the minimum requirement of 20 to require the supermajority vote of the commission. And just to give a background of this property, so back in the, in May of 2014, the applicant did submit a specific use permit application. At that time, they were requesting 24 units, 50 parking spaces, and the design consisted of two stories. There was a total of six structures proposed on the property and one common aerial, which was proposed to be a playground. So, at that time, when the property was petitioned to have a specific use permit, the current district was already light retail. So, in light retail, apartments are not allowed. In no commercial area are apartments allowed unless the property was annexed prior to 1985. So, since this property was annexed in 1992, it would not qualify to allow apartments. So, therefore, that's why they had to do the specific use. So, at that time, when it had area district F, the units that are allowed per acre are 8.5 units. The size of the property is 1.61 acres, so the maximum allowed units was 13. Even with the specific use permit, it wouldn't have been able to allow the 24 proposed units. So, this was the layout that was proposed at the time. So, as you can see, it was six structures in fourplex configuration and with the 15 parking spaces. This is just a render of what they were proposing. Just as a brief explanation of the specific use and its function, it's just to allow a use. It is not meant to change the area district. So, at that time, even though it was approved, it allowed the apartment use, but it did not change the area district to where they could have the 24 units allowed on the property. So, as, when it was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was no opposition. The commission did support it. This was back on August 8th of this year. The conditions that were implemented on this property, they were voluntary by the applicant. There was, they voluntarily capped it at 24 dwelling units. Even though the proposed area district, which is H, would allow them to have up to 40 units, they voluntarily capped it at 24. They also agreed on having a five-foot vegetation buffer along the southern property line and a privacy screening fence for the protection of the single-family homes that were abutted.
Are there any other multifamily dwellings in the proximity?
You actually approved one last, last commission meeting on October 1st, which was the development, the specific use and the rezoning for area district on Denne, actually pretty close to Achievement. And it's right by the trail.
Yes, but that hasn't been, that's just been recently approved, has, not under construction.
Correct.
That was approved by the planning and zoning or?
By the city commission.
And is this the, is this two-story or three-story?
Two-story.
Two. And P N Z approved it, right? Just with that voluntary condition by the contractor?
Correct.
And my understanding, this was approved or the plat, was approved sometime back, right? We're talking years ago?
Yes. Well, the specific use permit was.
Okay.
Oh, the subdivision plat, yes, it was a while back. Oh, the subdivision plot? Yes, it was a while back.
Okay. Anything else, guys? This is a public hearing? Okay, guys, if you're going to speak, just come up and come up to the mic. Just say your name, please. If you have a designated representative, that's fine. That would be a lot easier.
In August, we voted to approve it or denied?
Denied.
So, on August twentieth, it was denied. And then on September thirteenth, it was requested to be reconsidered for vote.
The denial is just on the density, not on the use. The use is in place already, so the track can be used for apartments even if you deny this request. It's just-
It could be used for apartments, just thirteen? Is that right? Okay.
Right, so they're asking for more density than it's permitted from thirteen to twenty-four. That was denied by the commission. It was asked by a commissioner to be reconsidered and that's why you're hearing the item again today for reconsideration.
Now, they can do thirteen and they can do three-story, two-story, whatever. Is that correct?
They cannot do three stories because the area district is-
Okay, but they could do two-story up to thirteen units right now?
Yes, sir.
If the area district that they're asking for is approved today, they would be able to do three stories.
Okay. But that's not even, that's not proposed?
No, they, according to the applicant, they want to go by what the render was proposed.
Okay. And applicant, is applicant here?
I think I'm representing him.
Okay. Well, they can speak if necessary, I guess, after. Go ahead.
So, would you like to open the public hearing?
Yes. Go ahead.
Please state your name.
Hi, my name's Robert Saldivar. I live at fifty-four ninety Quayle Glen, and it's a neighborhood. It's not, we don't want the apartments there. We want you guys to flat-out just reject it. We don't want the apartments there. We pay high taxes. We have a very nice neighborhood. We've worked very hard to be in the neighborhood that we're in and it's not, it's not what's going to happen tomorrow. It's what's going to happen in two or three years. Apartments are very, very expensive to upkeep. The maintenance gets pushed behind. Vegetation goes down. If you come through our neighborhood, you'll see that every yard in that neighborhood is manicured. And that's what we're worried about, that they're not going to keep the upkeep. Not next week, not next month, not next year, but in two years, in three years. Where are the dumpsters going to be? You know, we don't leave our trashcans out on the street every day. We move them, we move them back when we're done. We take pride in our neighborhood. And we want you guys to just vote it down.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening.
You were here last time.
I was here last time. And this set is just across the street where they want to put the others. Basically, we're single dwelling homes in the area. And if you go over there, those two lots or whatever they want to build, and now they want to build on the other side, there's always red cards from the city because the yards are not cleaned. So, I can imagine what it's going to be like if they put apartments there. Who's going to take care of them? They're not taking, the lots are not taken care of right now. So, basically, I'm asking you to please side with us because we're single dwelling homes. There's no other apartments there and we have a beautiful area.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
My name was Gene Getzel.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So, the red card, the notice to cut the lawn, that's like notice for citation, is the property where they're building the apartments or it's next to it?
No, right there where they want to build. The one that came up on that.
If they're not taking care of the land now, they can take care of the apartments there. They shouldn't take care of the land now, show us.
All right, guys, if you're going to speak at the podium, please, just try and keep some order here.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Robert Garcia. Good evening. I built my house there about nine years ago. I built it myself, a lot of sacrifice. And those properties that they're talking about, like they were saying, they're never kept. There's always red cards on there because the grass not cut. There's a stop sign when you get to Denet. The mesquites are always overgrown, real hazard. I mean, I'm just, like all my neighbors, you know, we work hard for our money and that's one of the main interests. My concern is how is it going to look? I already pay about thirty-seven hundred dollars a year in taxes. For me, that's a lot of money. And I just really worried that our property values are going to go way down. And I don't think it's fair. If it was turned down before for a reason, I mean, it's the same thing. I mean, how would you feel if you work hard for your home and they built some apartments? And what if, we don't even know all of the apartments' pictures. We don't know. I mean, it's just, it would be a shame. And plus, the trail is right by there. People walk at night, exercise or whatnot. Who knows what kind of people are going to live there, what kind of apartments. So, I just ask you to reconsider and hopefully you don't pass for them to build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, actually, I have the same concerns. You know, we take pride in our home.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, just, I don't want to interrupt your name. Please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Josephine Gonzalez. And I was the one that sent in the protest. The reason I did that was because I'm the only one that gets the letter there. So, I pass it around to my neighbors. And I went around and took signatures in case people couldn't come because of their work or et cetera. But I would like to say I take pride of ownership. And actually, the city of Brownsville, you know, there's, right on Denet, there's no view, you know, when we turn in from Quayle Glen to Denet, I had to call to get somebody over there to cut the trees. And there's potholes there, you know, that are not taken care of. I don't see that the city of Brownsville is taking care of that neighborhood. I am concerned and I would like to protest just like the others. Because when I bought there, you know, I bought because it was residential. And now becoming commercial, I, you know, I just don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you. As Josie was saying, and Holn knows this, I'm a cyclist, Holn's a cyclist, and as you're pulling out there, we've had volunteers, just some neighbors of mine, who've actually trimmed trees on their property so that we can see when we're leaving. Now, as I mentioned, if they're not taking care of their property now, what is going to assure us that they're going to take care of their property in three or four years?
My name is Joe Gonzalez. On Denet, there's no traffic lights, okay? That's very unsafe on Denet. Behind that property, there's a main hall, Resaca. It's not fair. If you have a big family, what are you going to do with the kids if they go back to, get drowned in the Resaca? It's very unsafe, very unsafe. So, we're having a lot of trouble so that you take that in consideration. It's not fair for ourselves and for the people that are going to be living there. It's going to be overcrowded. There's only one way out, one, two ways out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. The other homes that did not protest, did the city make contact with them or?
So, as you can see on the protested map, by state law, we're only required to send out to two-hundred feet surrounding the property that's in question. So, most of the dots, those people were within the written protest, but they were outside of that two-hundred-foot buffer. So...
My question is, almost all of the homes have dots except for the two that make it qualify. Were those people, did the city make contact with them or we just never heard from them, so we assume they're okay with it? I'm just saying, like, maybe they didn't see the notice or?
Within the circle, you notified them, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner, that may be something we're able to address in the U D C. Other municipalities extend that boundary four hundred feet or four hundred and fifty feet. It's optional to assume municipality. Ours, Brownsville's currently set at two hundred in accordance with state law.
I understand. I'm just saying that almost all of the homes have dots except for the two that counted. So, did we make contact? Are they okay?
Right.
We're not required to make contact if they're outside of the buffer area.
But the two that are in, we did send them a letter.
Oh, yes. We sent them a letter. Actually, Ms. Gonzalez, she called me. I spoke to her and I was the one who advised her about the written protest.
We do have one more person that wanted to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Just let us know your name, please.
Hi, my name is Raquel Reyes. And the reason I'm here is I'm not agreeing with the apartments they're going to build. I remember in twenty thirteen when I got there, what the most like me was, there was no noise. It was so quiet neighborhood. And now, in a few years, I can't imagine so many kids running in our streets. And I do not agree with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why are we reconsidering this? Quayle, you're the one who brought it up, right?
Yes, I asked for it. The developers contacted me. I voted against it the first time. They explained, had a lot of questions and-
No, you voted in favor of it. Or I'm looking at the minutes and you voted in favor of-
I voted against it. It was four-three.
For denial, in favor of a denial.
Yeah, the motion that was made was made in the negative.
Okay, sorry. Yeah.
You, wait, you voted against it?
So, now you want to be able to-
Who brought it back? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, you know, no one gets the letter, even though, you know, of all the people here, I've made copies of it and spread it around the neighborhood. But, you know, we're not even on the Carson app.
What I was trying to ask, you do live in the zone and you received the letter, right?
I am the only one that has gotten it.
Did you make contact with your other two neighbors that did not protest it? There's two lots right next to you?
Yeah. Mrs. Gonzalez, is your house within the circle? I'm sorry, can you look at that?
My address is fifty-four eighty-nine Quayle Glen.
I've got one thing out. These are empty lots. This lot, this gentleman's from Mexico. He left.
Yeah, but can you just point out Mrs. Gonzalez's?
I'm sorry.
This gentleman left, has invested his money here in Mexico. He's in danger of Mexico.
No.
This lot here is empty.
I'm Quayle Glen.
Sir, just the ones inside the circle, if you would.
So, it's safe to say that they did not receive their notice? That's what I was trying to ask. If there was a circumstance where somebody lives in Mexico, they didn't check their mail, that's what happened. That's why those two are not spoken about.
Just to clarify, we do not send postage out of the country.
Well, just to-
Just to clarify, we do not send postage out of the country.
How did you make contact with them?
The thing of it is, this twenty people that signed this protest, none of them got the letter. The only one that got it was myself.
The city is only required to send within that circle, which is four houses, and you were in there, which is why you got one. But my question was, why didn't the other, everybody in the neighborhood protested it? But where did those two people go? That was my question. And it was an empty lot and somebody from Mexico. That's why, that's why it was able to fall through the cracks.
What about the lots to the north of the property? There's at least, looks like four of them that are within the circle and two partial ones.
That's a good point.
Well, my neighbors are right across the street or here, and they didn't get the letter. And they're right across from me.
Yeah, we understand. Okay. Anybody else going to speak on this item?
So, everything within the red line, which is the two-hundred, were the ones that were notified?
So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Neese's question, were the homes on the other side noticed as well?
Everyone within the two-hundred-foot radius or buffer, I'm sorry, was notified.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Please, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
My name is Robert Garcia, Major Commissioners. My house is the one right across of that area where they want to build those-
Above it?
No, to the south.
Okay.
The one on yellow with the blue dot?
Okay, okay.
This one right here. This one right here.
Okay.
That's my house.
Okay.
And I just built my house about six months ago. And I bought, I built a house because it was a very nice neighborhood and they sold me the idea that it was very quiet, very calm. And there's no apartments in that subdivision. There's none. On the other side, on the north side, there are some duplex and some other ones. And they have, I mean, when we get heavy rains, all of those cars over there, they park in our, actually in my side of the, of the, of the street, on the sidewalk. So, when we get heavy rains, all of those cars on the units, let's assume that it's one car per unit. We're talking about thirteen, twenty, I don't know how many. They're going to be all over the subdivision. It's going to be a very, very complicated situation. And I'm totally disagreeing on getting or building those apartments there.
So, real quick, just to ask you, because it was very unclear when I asked before, the two homes that are to the side that are not in blue dots are because nobody lives in the country that has those homes?
No, they live there. I mean, I have the neighbor, my neighbor here, right here, next one, next to me, they live there. I don't know if they're here. Probably not.
But they protested because they have the dock, right?
Yes, they signed the-
The ones with the white lots?
Do you know?
Yes.
So, the two homes next to it were okay with this?
I got the letter like a-
Guys, I have to keep order. So, if you're going to talk, you got to come up. We can't be yelling from the audience.
If we can clarify, everybody within the red line is within the buffer area was legally notified. And the people in the, in the blue with the yellow are the protest, people that protested within the two-hundred buffer.
I understand that completely.
But they're telling me that it's under construction. So, where's, do they have a mailbox? How were they notified?
They have a mailing address. They should. I mean, the county sends taxes to people's mailing addresses, so.
So, our system is linked to the Cameron County information. So, whatever address is registered under Cameron County appraisal district, that's what we use. So, if it's an address out of the country, they're not going to receive it. If it's an address that was changed and the person no longer lives there, we will send it, but we, it's out of our hands to determine if they live there or not.
And these are all hypotheticals. It's not, it's not unique to this neighborhood. It's everywhere.
It could be anywhere in the United States. You know, some people, you, we are legally required to send it to the Cameron County. And, you know, it's up to them whether they-
I have property in Austin. I get it to my Brownsville address.
It's strange that somebody would be building a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house and not oppose apartments being built behind them.
As we mentioned, this, as we mentioned, this one right here is still under construction. It's for sale. It's just got finished. I drove, I walked around the back of the house the other day to look in the windows. This one here is the gentleman from Mexico that has his money invested here because, but he, where it's safe. But he hasn't been there maybe in the last six months, five, six times. Very nice house. So, he wasn't notified. I'm sure as soon as these people here find out this is going on, they're going to be on our side also.
Mr. Saldivar, one thing I didn't ask is where's yours? Can you circle your house?
Mine is this one right here.
Was your right in front?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
I have a quick question. The people that are here against this, did you go and voice your concerns to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Josie's been following, leading it up.
At the hearings, did you, were you guys?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
My concern, my, I guess what I was wondering is, why are they not just developing it into homes? It's an acre and a half. That's a lot of land. I mean, that's easily, that's, I mean, I know you can fit four homes on an acre at least, at least. I don't have an acre and I have one of the biggest lots in the, in the subdivision because I'm on that corner.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
Thank you for letting me talk to you. I am Ramiro Gonzalez. I represent Palenque Holdings. We were the developers of Forest North, the whole area, one, two, three, the condos and five, six, and seven. When we presented seven to the city, originally, as it is inception, we presented Lot forty-seven and forty-five for either multifamily or patio homes. By the city commission's recommendations, we went for commercial. And the reason that we went for commercial is because supposedly the either, I don't know what the name is, Escalante or Pinera Road was going to be built. This was in two thousand and seven. It wasn't yesterday. It was in two thousand and seven. We presented that as multifamily and as or patio homes. The city told us, recommended us to change it to commercial, to commerce for commercial applications. We did that. We changed the presentation to commercial for those two lots. Because supposedly this Escalante or Pinera Road was going to be built from Paredes Line Road all the way to the Expressway. In two thousand and thirteen, the Escalante and Pinera Road hasn't been built. We don't know anything about it. We went to the city again and we asked them to change Lot forty-seven to apartments. Why we wanted original. And the reason is because for commercial purposes, there is no use for that unless the Pinera Road was built. The Pinera Road hasn't been built and I don't know when it's going to be built. We left- We left lot forty-five for commercial for in case Pineda Road is being built. We already sold the lots to new owners and they told you to come and give you an explanation as to what the history of this development was. Every time that we sold a lot, we gave the customers a piece of the plot. And in the plot, there are two big lots and they are commercial lots, and we told them they were commercial lots. Now, some people bought it in second hand. We don't know about that. But every time that we sold a lot, we gave them a plot and we gave them an explanation as to that. That's what I have to say. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Well, no, I need, the guy, the young guy, sorry, sorry. What's the zoning of the lot across the street on Achievement Avenue to the right? And, or like, what is there right now?
It's the same zone.
It's the same property?
Second commercial F. It's not the same property, but it has the same zoning.
So could they do apartments there?
They cannot because of the annexation. Right.
Because of the what?
Apartments cannot be built in commercial zoning unless the property was annexed before nineteen eighty-five.
And it was not...
So where's the multifamily that's nearest to there?
Are you talking about the one that got approved recently?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I'm trying to figure out where there's multifamily.
So there was no multifamily in the area. There was just this one that was approved recently.
Okay.
And it was just a duplex, right?
It was eight units in total.
Sorry?
Eight units.
And nobody had a problem with that one?
No.
But it's also not as close. How many units?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. What about the blue? Obviously, we have the blue in the grid, but what about the blue to the right?
It's commercial, but they haven't sought a special use to build apartments, so...
Right. Right now, it's just light retail. The only thing they would be able to put their offices or some sort of restaurant or dry restaurant, that would be it.
And as I said right now, they can build thirteen apartment units where they're planning.
With the approved specific use that they had back in two thousand and fourteen, it allows a use. It does not change the area district. So area district F allows eight-point-five units. They have one-point-six-one acres. Therefore, they can only have thirteen units.
Thirteen units are gonna be, they're proposing thirteen units?
No, no. They're proposing twenty-four. That's why they're requesting a change in area district to H, which allows twenty-five per acre. But they're capping it at twenty-four.
Okay.
So the prior council has entitled the property for the apartment use. What the prior council didn't deal with was the density that the developer desires. And so that's what's before you tonight. Under his current zoning for apartments and his current density, he only can build thirteen units. He would like to increase that to twenty-four with this consideration before you tonight.
Okay. I understand now.
I have a question.
He's trying to double what he can do. Okay.
So for the developer, you've heard their concerns. What is it that you can do to alleviate their concerns? Would you mind? Yeah, anybody?
Buenas tardes. Soy Sergio Izquierdo. Soy el que pretende desarrollar ahí. ¿Me preguntaba? ¿Escuchaste los temores, los dolores de cabeza que se van a presentar, que ellos piensan que se van a presentar? ¿Qué es lo que podrían hacer ustedes para poder prevenir que se vayan a presentar lo que ellos están diciendo? Pues estamos proponiendo una comunidad cerrada, un gated community, high-end, con un buffer zone alrededor para que no moleste a nadie. La doble altura de los departamentos y con mucho jardín, mucho landscaping. Atrás de nosotros tenemos una propiedad, está una resaca que pretendemos ser un deck para que la gente disfrute de la resaca, la gente que va a vivir ahí. Y pues, yo creo que va a estar bien. No creo que esté tan mal como lo están planteando los vecinos. Y déjenme preguntarle, señor Izquierdo. Vi la foto de lo que están proponiendo de los departamentos, pero lo que quería saber es, más o menos, ¿cuánto va a ser la inversión? ¿Tienes una idea? Dos millones de dólares. Okay. Dos millones por los veintitrés unidades? Veinticuatro. Veinticuatro. No precisamente va a ser esta fachada que se vio porque es eso que el anterior dueño, señor Gonzalez, presentó a la comisión. Se van a rediseñar todos otra vez. Lo que estamos peleando que sean veinticuatro unidades porque es como hace sentido el business plan para invertir dos millones de dólares. Y también vi unas preguntas sobre dos o tres niveles. Va a ser dos niveles. Dos niveles. Okay.
So I have a question, and it reminds me of Commissioner Longoria, because this would have been his question. So let's say it's denied today again. He still can build thirteen apartments as it stands right now.
Yes.
So and there would be nothing that we could do for this neighborhood?
Absolutely.
Just to make you aware of that situation, even if it's denied, he can still go and make thirteen apartments there.
So some of the concerns you've heard have to do with the use, the concern about apartments. There's also concerns about the height. So under the current zoning, they can have two-story buildings on their rear property line, across from the resaca from the existing single-family residential. And so, but only up to the thirteen units, right?
So what he's asking for right now, is it gonna go higher than two stories?
So it does allow under the new area district to go three stories. And, but, that tonight to give him the twenty-four, but I don't think he's after three stories. He's after two-story.
Awesome. Just to clarify, you guys do have the authorization to say you can put that additional condition to cap it at two stories.
Does he have an issue, do you have an issue with that, or?
No, it's gonna be two stories.
Yeah. Like that condition, the commission could also consider restricting. In order to give the increased number of units to the developer, you could require that the units that are developed nearest a single-family residential be single-story. So you do have some options in how you deal with the design through the SUP.
Okay, so we could say you can have twenty-four, but they have to be single-story so they don't intrude on the homes behind?
Because of the size of the tract, it would probably only be those buildings nearest the single-family.
Okay. Two in the front, one in the back. Okay. And the commission could also require additional buffers that are beyond their standard building code, right? To protect them from sound, intrusion, anybody that might wanna jump over.
So if you, if you... So there's that option. There's, obviously, you have the option tonight to deny, you have the option to approve. Or you could table and you could allow the developer, the residents, and the staff to meet together to see if there's a design that all parties could agree to. But for the, for the sake of the discussion, today, he could walk into the building department and get a permit for thirteen apartments, two-story, at his rear property line if he wanted to.
Okay.
Are renditions available? Do you all have renditions, how it's gonna look like, that could be shared with everybody?
There was one rendering.
My recommendation to you, because of the thirteen and the two-story, would be to possibly work something out with him so we could approve the one-story and the extra buffers to protect your neighborhood from having a two-story apartment with thirteen units being built.
Ma'am, go ahead.
But we've seen it happen.
Sorry, my English is not good, but I tried to explain in Spanish, my language. Okay? Considero, anteriormente somos, mi nombre es Pilar Lerios, a tus órdenes, a sus órdenes. Este, considero que, por ejemplo, independientemente de todas las cosas que ha habido, de que no nos ha llegado información, de que nos hemos preocupado como vecinos para distribuirle la información y que todos estén enterados de esta situación, es que considero yo que las condiciones no son las aptas en esa área. No soy arquitecto, pero soy ingeniero en México, y esa área, este, para empezar, no es un área de resaca. Es un área de, es la consideran como resaca, pero es un, lo ocupan como un área de desagüe para transportar el agua cuando en la otra subdivisión se inundan y nos vienen y nos vacían el agua ahí. Es como un, se le puede decir, no tengo el nombre ahorita en español, ajá, un dren de agua exactamente. O sea, que no es área de resaca. La calle de la Chisme es muy angosta. No es un área tampoco como para considerar sobre la denet tampoco, es un área de dos caminos y devenida. Este, no tiene las condiciones como una superavenida, no hay área ni de bicicletas, ni la, hay mucha gente. Hay un andador en la parte de atrás. Hay mucha gente que pasea con sus perros, que camina. O sea, es un área muy tranquila. Y la verdad, no es tanto que nos preocupe quién no va o quién habita en ese lugar. La preocupación es exactamente, o sea, no son las condiciones para una construcción de departamentos. Este, es muy reducido el espacio, la avenida, empieza a ser transitada, pero por las personas que estamos viviendo cerca. Imagínese cuando se llene de más personas ahí. Es de la todo. Gracias.
Gracias. Okay, anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Actually, we need to close public hearing.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would offer a motion to table. I don't know if that's the will of the commission or the neighborhood, but so that you can meet with the developer. As it is, he can build a two-story without a buffer to protect you from it. And I would just welcome a motion to table. So maybe you could meet with him and negotiate. Let's, you know, increase the amount, but they'd be one story by ours. I mean, just offering you that courtesy before it's decided.
I think that that does make sense. I mean, based on what's happening, there may be a compromise, but we have a motion to the table to have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the table is.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number three. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero forty-one to rezon from apartment G, professional office A, to general retail G for a two-point-zero-six acre tract out of block fifty-four, El Jardín subdivision, share twenty-seven, Espíritu Santo grant located near the corner of Central Avenue and Mackenzie Road.
So the applicant is looking to upzone from a mixed zoning of apartment G and professional office A to general retail G. This property has two-point-zero-six acres and the proposed use is a retail plaza, and it is fronting Central Avenue and Mackenzie Road. Here's an aerial view of the property. So the predominant zoning in the area is dwelling. There is also some professional office, general retail, and apartment. This is a two-hundred-foot buffer map. There were thirty-one mailouts and zero written opposition. Just to point out, on September fifth, when this item was presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were two residents with concerns, mainly increased traffic and maintaining the characteristic of a single-family neighborhood for the abutting subdivisions. So this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. PNZ supports this rezon from apartment G, professional office A, to general retail G.
Folks, do you mind moving the conversation outside so we can hear the rest of the presentation? Ellen, can we move the conversation outside?
We recently approved some sort of zoning in that specific, in that nearby. Do you remember what it was?
Correct. So just to give some additional background, this item was presented on September fifth, but the Planning and Zoning Commission, they motioned to approve it, or one of the commissioners did, but there was no second. So the motion died on the floor. It was brought again to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October the third. It was approved, and now it's probably before you.
Okay.
I think we've seen someone like this before.
Right. So you guys approved for a residential development. So they were going, they actually downzoned from apartment to dwelling G to allow a single-family home development. So actually, the property owner who's applying, he owns all of this. And he is basically looking, all of this area is going to be single-family homes, one-hundred-seventy-five lots.
One-seventy-five, you said?
One-hundred-and-seventy-five, yes. And so the next case, actually, case forty-two, it's for this particular area, which is for zero-point-eight acres. And he's also looking to rezon it to commercial, to also put a commercial plaza.
I think it's great, and it's very close to a school, and it gaps some sidewalks. We recently put in a tremendous amount of money, almost seven-hundred-thousand dollars of sidewalks during my second term. And that was the one area that did not get sidewalks, and so now it will have it. So that saves the city a lot of money and provides safe passage to all of the children that live on Eloy and that other area.
Wait, so where is it the industrial, or sorry, the commercial gonna be?
Closer to Burnett?
So for this property, or for the particular property on this case, it's this corner one right here. It's two-point-zero-six acres.
Oh, the green one?
Yes, this right here. So it's right on the corner of Mackenzie and Central.
Motion?
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here on this item? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing?
Motion and a second to close any discussion. Those in favor?
Can I point something out? I mean, it's just technical, maybe it's the lawyer coming out in me. But it looks like you're putting the city down as a representative of the, or the agent of the owner. When you're stamping, I'm looking at these other ones. They stamp them up at the top, and now you're stamping them in the representative.
We'll make a note of that.
Representative of the owner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Public hearing number four. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero forty-two to rezon from dwelling G, professional office A, to general retail G for a zero-point-eight-seven-seven acre tract of land out of twenty-six-point-ninety-six acres in block fifty-one, El Jardín subdivision, share nineteen and twenty-seven, Espíritu Santo grant located near the corner of Central Avenue and Mackenzie Road.
So just as I mentioned, this case is related to the previous one. In this case, it is an appeal. The PNZ commission denied it. The applicant is requesting to upzone to general retail G. The current zoning is dwelling G, professional office A, and the property has zero-point-eight acres. The proposed use is a retail plaza and it's fronting Central Avenue. Here's an aerial of the property. So again, predominant zoning is dwelling. There's also light, professional office, general retail, and apartment. This is a two-hundred-foot buffer map. There were thirty mailouts and zero written opposition. Again, bringing back the concerns that the two residents had back when it was, when it appeared at PNZ, increased traffic and meeting residential characteristic of the neighborhood. So the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. PNZ did not support this rezon from dwelling G, professional office A, to general retail G.
So the things that would be there would be like, like an insurance agency or a subway or...
Personal service outlets, barber shops, beauty salons, professional office, doctor's office.
Dog grooming.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anybody here on this item? Any motions?
Motion to close public hearing?
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Public hearing number five. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash row fifty-two to rezon from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot seven, block seventy-one dash A, still needs extension in addition to the city of Brownsville located at three-thirty West St. Charles Street.
So this applicant is looking to rezon the area district. They want to go from dwelling A to dwelling G. The purpose is to reduce the setbacks to allow a carport in the front yard. This property has zero-point-one-four acres, and the property is fronting West St. Uh, this property has zero-point-one-four acres and the property is fronting West St. Charles. Here's an aerial view of the property. As you can see, there's, uh, zoning, uh, the zoning is dwelling. There's also, uh, light industrial, medium industrial, general retail and apartment. This is the two-hundred-foot buffer map, there were twenty-eight mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. PNZ supports this rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G.
Public hearing, is anybody here on this item? Motion?
Oh, somebody's coming.
Oh, okay. Can you tell us your name, ma'am, please?
Evangelina Sanchez, voy a hablar español. Okay. El motivo que estoy aquí es porque nosotros queremos hacer un porche en la casa. Este, lo que pasa es que nosotros cuando compramos ahí hay un árbol demasiado grandes que tiene demasiado raíz enterrada. Entonces, la raíz ya empezó a romper todo el concreto del driveway. Y nosotros acabamos de renovar, poner piso y la raíz estar dando para la tubería. Entonces, estamos sacando el árbol, pero ya nada más falta desenterrar la raíz que es muy grande. Al sacar, al cortar el árbol, todo el sol nos está dando en la mera puerta y ventana. Y queremos hacer un porchecito nada más para cubrir la sombra.
Okay. Algo más?
No.
Okay, gracias.
Gracias.
This was supported by PNZ? Okay.
We have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, okay?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Public hearing number six, public hearing in action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero ninety-two. To rename McNair family drive from Palm Boulevard to San Pan Boulevard to East Fronton Street. At this time, uh, staff recommends that this item be tabled.
Motion to table?
We have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we'll table it.
Putting eye on that.
Commissioner, ju, just to give more information.
I'm sorry.
Well, we didn't get a reason why.
Uh, yes, and, and I don't think that's a proper motion, I think should be no action. Uh, my understanding is that recommendation to the commission is that no action be taken because the application was filed real late on Friday. So it doesn't allow the city sufficient time to hand out the notices, because it's still a renaming of a, of a street. And some notices need to go out, so, uh, and we, we had a meeting and since the application was done late on Friday, there's been insufficient time to be able to notice everyone who may be concerned.
What's the notice period?
Uh, I believe it's te, it's a ten days, ten days.
Okay, so you said some of the notices didn't go out?
No, none of the notices, because it was filed late on Friday.
Okay.
City secretary, may I withdraw my motion to table?
And counsel, just, uh, so I can understand this, you're stating no action, does that somehow harm the application? Or is there gonna have to be an application again for this?
No, it does not harm the application, the process continues. Uh, it allows, uh, notices to go out and I believe it can make the very next agenda.
Well, no, it cannot, because we have to, it's a ten-day notice, plus we want a notice in the newspaper, we talked about that. So, we're, we'll get it as soon as possible, just make sure we have the notice in the newspaper and the notice to the residents. Um, and so we're gonna try to make it the quickest date possible, we'll try to make the next, um, commission meeting, but.
November fifth? Is that the next meeting?
Yes. So counsel, what would be the difference then between tabling and taking no action?
Well, it, you, you, not, uh, well, tabling, uh, is basically the same thing, right? But in ta, by tabling, it could remain limbo for, forever, basically. Uh, no action on it and passing it to the very next available hearing allows the process to be set now and, and to be placed already on the agenda. Without any further action by, by the commission.
The only difference then is gonna be that by taking no action, it'll get put on the next agenda.
Uh, or the, or the next.
Yeah, we can do it whenever you're ready.
So it's the fifteenth, and ten days is the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, we can do that, we can make, we will send out those notices as soon as possible, get in the newspaper to make the next, um, November fifth.
So, it had already gotten tabled, the tabling passed, so is it really gonna make a difference to take no action, honestly?
Well, I think the commi, well, uh, it's, it may be semantics.
It'll still, you know, it sounds like it, but is it gonna be, uh, it'll still come up at the next meeting if we so desire, right?
Okay, but, yeah, by tabling, it doesn't mean we can't tell them now to put it on the next meeting, so we want it on the next meeting.
Yeah, I just think it's cleaner, but if y'all wanna go that other route.
Well, it's already, 'cause she, she's trying to withdraw her motion, but we are, it's already been voted on.
Well, we voted, I'll, I'll let my motion stand.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. So, just for the record, it's been tabled?
Yes.
Tabled until November fifth? Tabled until November fifth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number seven, consideration and discussion on ad hoc committee for street naming policy.
Okay, this is an item that it's related, I'm gonna go ahead and present for management for this one. Uh, good evening, mayor and members of the, uh, commission. The policy on renaming streets, uh, allows the creation of an ad hoc, uh, committee to assist this commission in making a decision. Now, it's an ad hoc committee, by its very nature and by its very name, is created as needed. Now, I know this is an item that this commission has seen at least two or now perhaps three times. Uh, and it'll be up to this commission to decide whether it would aid you in making a decision on the renaming, uh, of the street, uh, to create a subcommittee. Because it's been an item that's been presented before, the com, the commission could find it usable in creating this ad hoc, or it could decide that it's, it knows enough about the subject matter and that an ad hoc is not needed.
Right now, your interpretation is that it, it's not mandatory to send it to an ad hoc?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, so then, as far as, uh, this particular item, if we, uh, what, is there a recommendation on that right now at this point?
It is, there is no recommendation from anyone, it depends on the commission, uh, on whether or not it believes that it needs, uh, the assistance of an ad hoc. Or if, if it would aid them in the process, they can create one. Or the commission could vote not to create one and just to put it on the agenda for the next time, next.
So, I would, I would urge that if, we don't need an ad hoc committee if it's determined that the, the policy has been met. In other words, that the requirements have been met, that we don't need to send it to another ad hoc and then decide whether, I think we should be the, the, the decide, decision makers on that.
Correct, Commissioner, and at the end of the day, if it's a qualifying petition, then, um, uh, you all will have to hear it regardless of whether an ad hoc is created. So you're gonna have to deal with it.
It seems like an extra step that's, that's really not necessary, I mean, if it were something technical, which, it's just a street naming, uh, policy, I don't see why we need to add an extra step in there.
You don't need to.
Conveying my thoughts to the.
You don't need to, but that's the way the policy was, was drafted, uh, and, uh.
So you want us to clarify that it's not mandatory?
No, but we, yes, you all get to decide whether you need the assistance in, in, in creating one or decide that you know enough about the, the item that, that one would not be required. And, and a, and a motion on the floor and a positive vote on that would suffice.
Um, so it says consideration and discussion, do we vote on that? Or is it just we're discussing that we might not need it, we can bring it back later, if it gets to that point?
That's what it sounds like.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's no action, so this, this is an action item then?
If we need it, bring it back.
Correct, we just need some, some, uh, some direction, because if one is, is going to be created, we'll bring an item to, for its creation and also to appoint members.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we need it, we'll bring it back.
Okay, so there'll be no action then?
Okay.
Thank you.
Action item number eight, consideration and action on approval of the city of Brownsville and kind donations of filter, hauling services and other bulk materials to the city of Brownsville, Texas Department of Public Safety Joint Tactical Training Center in the amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty dollars.
Uh, mayor commissioners, this is an item, um, the, the, this is a partnership between the city of Brownsville and the Department of Public Safety. Uh, the state of Texas has allocated eight-and-a-half million dollars for the creation of this joint tactical training center. Uh, P U B has, uh, there was a need for utility work to be extended to service electric and water. Uh, so P U B has committed four-hundred, uh, to the effort. And, uh, this commitment today, uh, if, if you approve, is the city's commitment towards that effort. Uh, so for, you know, you could, you know, see the leverage in this project. Uh, this is only phase one of the project. Um, there is a couple more phases and in total, uh, we hope that we can, uh, bring the money down from Austin. Uh, it'll be about twenty-five to twenty-seven million dollars at the end of the project. And so, um, if you have any questions, I'm here, we asked for your approval tonight. Thank you.
I move to approve the, um, donation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action item number nine, consideration and action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero ninety to authorize the sale and donation of police, fire and EMS units to the municipo de Matamoros-Tamaulipas.
Before you go on, can we just have the minutes reflect that Commissioner Niece did not vote in the last item? She was, oh, okay.
That was a tactical training center thing?
Uh, mayor, mayor commissioners, uh, this is something that we periodically do, uh, we've done over time, is help our sister city, Matamoros, uh, through, uh, donation of equipment. Primarily in the past, it's been donation. Uh, this time, we did ask for, uh, some, a contribution, a, a sale of these items. Uh, this includes a, a ladder truck that has now met its life here, uh, but that doesn't mean that it can't be used in Matamoros. Uh, it's still very, it's still fully functional and it just has not, um, it just does not pass our standards. And plus, we bought a lot of new equipment. And so, uh, it also includes two, uh, police, uh, they're, they're in the form of ambulances, but they were used for SWAT purposes. Uh, but I think they would be converted back into ambulances, so we're selling the ladder truck and the two police ambulances that I call them. Uh, and then it is a donation of another pumper truck that, um, that, uh, we had, that has already, uh, way beyond its lifespan. Uh, and has really no value, no public resale value. Uh, so we couldn't take that and sell it, uh, to the public.
What is the donation amount?
Uh, the donation is a pumper truck. And it's in the resolution, so there's four items in the backup in the resolution that are approved tonight. So it's, the ladder truck, uh, sale of the ladder truck for about twenty thousand, the twenty thousand dollars.
That's what I was asking, I'm sorry, not, yeah, what was the sale?
So the sale is a ladder truck for twenty thousand, that's pretty much what you could get in the market for it, we did a, a market study. Um, the, the two EMS units, uh, we bought off of, off an auction. Uh, and so those are at fifteen hundred, so it's really twenty-three, twenty-three thousand dollars that Matamoros is gonna contribute, uh, or pay for this, for those vehicles.
Twenty-three hundred dollars?
Twenty-three thousand.
In the past, it was, it was a gift to them.
Yes.
Why did it change?
Uh, because these, the ladder truck has a market value, uh, and they were willing to, uh, to contribute as well.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Action item number ten, consideration and action to award supplemental agreement number three for task order number two to Garver LLC, request for proposal number A T E dash thirty-nine dash zero-six-eighteen for the terminal project at the Brownsville South Padrae Island International Airport in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars, fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars.
Okay, uh, good evening, uh, honorable mayor and commissioners. Um, this is to, um, to award this fifty-four thousand dollars for, uh, design work to Garver, um, specifically for, mm, designing of the airline spaces at the terminal, uh, which is amortized over five years on repayment from the airlines. So we're basically just gonna be floating that, but building it ourselves to defray the upfront costs of the airlines.
Um, so it's to design the area where the terminals would be?
So i, it was initially, in initial discussions with the airlines, uh, they had expressed some desire to, uh, do the design themselves, do their own layouts, and we were just gonna pass that cost on to them. Um, now that we're closer to, uh, the construction of it, I guess their budgets have changed, so they're not prepared to put that investment into it initially. Uh, we've worked out an agreement for them to, uh, repay us for that design work as well as the construction, um, over the course of five years, the first five years of their, uh, tenancy at the airport.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Is there a clawback then, so if they, if they don't fulfill the five-year commitment to the city of Brownsville, then what?
Uh, that's, that's, that's in the agreement that, yes, yes, that, that's in their lease and in their repayment agreement. It's, uh, it's not part of this approval process here.
So, I had seen somewhere that there was like a baseball stadium or something where somebody threw in something and buried it while they were building it. This is completely off topic, but I was hoping that maybe we could hide something like a symbol that means something to everybody in Brownsville?
I think that was Jimmy Hoffa under Metzger.
Is that what it was, that, something cool? Something cool that we all know about? The time capsules hidden?
Right.
Okay, see, I wasn't that off.
No.
Bury your Tesla.
Definitely got thrown by Jimmy Hoffa, but it's cool.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action item number eleven, consideration and action to approve the airport planning and development services master agreement. Request for proposal number APS dash zero-eight dash zero-one-nineteen. No-cost agreement, all future projects under this agreement will be formulated under a task order in which costs will be associated with specific task order between the city of Brownsville and Crawford, Murphy and Tilly.
Um, good evening again, this is a RFP that we did for an on-call consultant for planning and, uh, design, planning development services, um, for the airport, again, it's no cost, uh, if we develop and have funding for it, uh, which would be identified either through an FAA project or other C I P project, then we would engage with that on-call.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action item number twelve, consideration and action to award of term contract to Miller-Hollander Inc., D B A Tequila Group Integrated Marketing Communications, request for proposal number M A S dash fifty-two dash zero-eight nineteen to provide marketing and advertising services to the Brownsville South Padrae Island International Airport.
Um, this is, uh, term contract, we did another RFP and, uh, we got about nine consulting firms responding. Uh, it was put through a selection committee and then, uh, it was recommended to the airport to award to, um, Miller-Hollander. The airport administration reviewed, um, the, uh, the tab sheets and everything and, and we also recommend the award of this contract to the Tequila Group, uh, marketing company.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number thirteen, consideration and action to authorize the city of Brownsville to enter inter, inter, interlocal contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District number one to furnish ambulance and emergency medical services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designated by zone number one on the official fire protection service zone map of the Cameron County Emergency Service District number one.
Good evening, honorable, honorable mayor and commissioners, uh, today we are requesting your consideration and action to approve an annual interlocal contract with the emergency dis, uh, service district number one, uh, to continue to provide EMS and fire services to the unincorporated areas of Cameron County. Uh, that's around Brownsville. Uh, to elaborate and give a background of the E S D and the contract, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Tom Hushins, Cameron County Emergency Management Coordinator, and Ms. Belinda Ayala, the Cameron County Emergency Services District Coordinator, to have a quick presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you for having us, commissioners, mayor. Uh, what I'd like to stress on, because a lot of, a lot of emergency service districts are different throughout the state. Ours runs off of a contract, ours was created on November fourteenth, nineteen seventy-five, because we didn't have any rural fire protection at the time. So we created this in nineteen seventy-five and we became a Cameron County Rural Fire Prevention District. And we consisted of maybe one or two fire trucks in the county area that would go out and, and put out fires. In nineteen eighty-eight is when we became service district number one, emergency service district number one. At that time, we had a small tax rate. We were charging, I believe it was three to five cents per hundred-dollar evaluation at that time. In nineteen ninety-five is when the state changed and the, we were able to go out for a full ten cents, but it had to be on vote. So we had an election at the time and it was overwhelmingly approved for us to have a maximum amount of ten cents, which is allowable by state. So our Cameron County Emergency District number one is the political subdivision the state of Texas created to serve the residents of the county with fire protection and safety, fire prevention, education, emergency medical services. Like I said, our funding and our budget is off of a tax rate of ten cents per hundred dollars valuation and uses the revenues of the contract for fire protection and emergency set, uh, medical services in the unincorporated areas of the county. Ten cents is the highest tax. 10 cents is the highest tax rate that you can levy to be able to get this services out there that are needed. I know in different areas, including up in Adago County, they have a much different tax rate of 3 cents per $100 valuation, but that's all they can get. There's no more room in the state law to allow them to go up. But we took that initiative in 1995 and passed by the voters. Our board is governed by five Board of Emergency Services Commissioners. Board members are required to complete at least six hours of continuing education. Members of the board are appointed by the Commissioners Court and each member of the court is responsible for naming one Emergency Service District Commissioner who resides within that district and meets the qualifications set by the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 775.034. Board members serve one and two-year staggered terms. However, the tax code allows board members to continue to serve until a replacement is appointed. So under what we are going to be showing you here is our fire service providers for the allocation of funds. And this is what we have given, or what the City of Brownsville has received on the fire services alone, is an annual base of 343,847 for a total amount of calls throughout the year of 195 calls. Now that comes out to approximately $1,800 per call. Now, I know some people are thinking, well, wait, that's not a lot on a call that lasts for three days, because I'm taking a fire truck out of here. But most of the calls that are received are mostly for fire alarms for, and they would run out there, they check it and they come right back, a total amount of maybe 15, 20 minutes to go out into that area and they're still getting paid the same amount of $1,800 per call, whether it's that or a call that resides over 12 hours. Recently, what the commission has approved is what we call 12-hour increments. Anything that a fire department or EMS is out at the scene for longer than 12 hours, they get paid again as if it's another day. So every 12 hours, they get paid as a call. Now, don't let this confuse you as price per call. The, what we come up with is an average set the year before. What Brownsville does is turns in all of their fire runs that they competed within the year. We take that number and we see how many, what percentage of calls that they get. Now, based off of the percentage that we get on our allocation of over $3 million per year, it is split 60% to fire, 40% to EMS. So out of that 60%, we take the number of calls that they had the year previous and that tells us what the contract will read for the next year. This way, you get an idea of how much money you have to work with within that year. So whether it be one year, it could be 300,000, the next year, depending on the amount of calls, it could, it's going to always average around 300 to 280,000. Now, where it comes out on the average per call is, let's say that instead of 195 calls, all of the region dropped down to 110 calls. Well, then that cost per call went up from 1,800 to 2,400 per call, because you're still going to get the same amount of money. There is no other funds available. This is all that we have within our areas, that 60% we're maxed out. When cities annex property outside the county, that tax revenue stops and it goes to that city, whoever annexes that area. So our 10%, or 10 cents per $100 valuation gets removed. So as we're looking through here, one of the next page, you're going to have the Service District that Brownsville... goes back. A little too fast. All right. The Brown, the Service District, the one that you see highlighted in the mustard-orange-yellow towards Boca Chica, that area highlighted in yellow is the Brownsville jurisdiction. That's what they cover under our Emergency Service District. So as you can see, going towards the island, there's not a lot of population. They mostly deal with wildland fires that go out there. If you're looking at towards the southmost area, there is some population and up towards the northern end of the, the city, going towards LaFerry is the other side of it. So that's what they cover in their ESD zone map. They, anything that goes beyond that, and let's say they have to go help out in the purple zone, which is the City of Rio Hondo or the City of Santa Rosa, we still pay them as a run. It counts as a run towards the City of Brownsville. So mutual aids are paid the same as a run within your city, under our, what we do here. In the past, it wasn't like that. If you got called out to a mutual aid in the county, you weren't paid for it. But now you are covered as a run within the county.
Next one.
I have a quick question for you. I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm just curious. So the one thing that's changed in the county's area, the mustard yellow, is the arrival of SpaceX? And I know that there are, I often see fire trucks there. Are those our fire trucks or are they...
Yes, they are. There, some of them are your fire trucks and the other fire trucks belong to SpaceX. SpaceX is not a taxing entity for the Emergency Service District. SpaceX, because they have their own fire department, their own pumper truck, they are their own entity, so we cannot tax them on that. So what they do, what you would have to do within the City of Brownsville is, anything outside of SpaceX is covered by the Emergency Service District. If they go into SpaceX, you would probably need to get a mutual aid or MOU with them to let them know what you're supposed to be doing in there. I know Chief and I were at the last launch and we looked at that and there was some fire, but that fire was outside of the gate, because usually within that, that area, they can put it out and they've had water cannons and go out a little bit further. But they are not a taxing entity.
Does this agreement include fire suppression?
Yes, it does include fire suppression.
And so we went out there twice, I think, during that last launch?
And then outside of the area, you were paid through the ESD.
So we did get paid?
Yes, if you put the cost in. Anything outside, if the fire is strictly held within that area, then that is not eligible for reimbursement from the Emergency Service District.
And you're telling us that they do have a fire department?
They do have a fire department, they have a fire chief. In fact, they're in, in the process from, we understand, is even getting an emergency medical services out there for them.
But they were required to do that though, right?
No, it wasn't a requirement. They chose to do that to, if a new business comes anywhere within the county, they have two options. One of them is a 10 cents per $100 evaluation of their property or they get their own fire department. If they have their own fire department, then, and first responder section within that area, then they are not required to pay the 10 cents per $100 evaluation.
Why didn't they help put out the fire that was outside?
They did.
They did?
They did. They, they have water cannons within their facility that shoot out and they do have one pumper truck that went out. And I believe they had some forerunners with some...
Why did we have to go out if they were able to do it? We went out, if they're able to take care of their fires, why did we end up having to go out?
It was outside their, outside their facility. Outside of their facility.
So they helped outside of their facility or they did?
They, they helped out a little bit outside the facility, but the, within the facility is their jurisdiction. Anything outside belongs to the City of Brownsville.
How many fire trucks do they have, do you know?
They have one right now, I think in their process of getting another one. And in our, our plans that we get through the Fire Marshal's Office at the county, they're looking at putting in a whole big fire department with three units and with an EMS 24/7.
Do you know when?
I wish I could tell you, but I know that the plans are there.
I think that's great that they're doing that, because it alleviates our need to be out there.
But we still have to be out there if it's outside of there?
If it's outside, they, they do not, because they do not have a contract with the Emergency Service District, so they cannot go outside that area.
But, I mean, they're capable and they're there, so obviously they would help.
And, and most of what's out there is wildland and areas that if it does burn, it can, a lot of it's...
Just a few rabbits.
...retribution of the area as well. It cleans it out and lets it grow back, so.
Yeah.
It's federal land, yes. EMS side of it as well, this is also the contract for the EMS. In last year, annual per rate was 291,000, annual with base is 306. And when we talk about base, what, what that is, is every time we give a contract out, we give a stipend upfront of 15,000. I think next year, Brownsville is going to be getting an extra 10,000, because they accrue our first responder unit. So they will get an extra 10,000 on that. So they get a percentage of the total runs is 25% of that. Quarterly, they get 76,000, supplement of 214. Now, it doesn't sound like a lot on an EMS, but remember EMSs have the ability to bill. This is just a supplement to their billing process. So if they bill for a Medicare or Medicaid run or if somebody had insurance, they get the full amount of that. This is on top of what they get. So it balances out, is if they go out and they have to do an accident and nobody has insurance, we making sure that they get some funding for going out into the county area. So that's what that particular one is for. And their EMS division is also in the back, which is the same as their fire division. So their, their map is exactly similar from their EMS to their fire. And we are here to answer any questions that you have on there. If there's any other questions, yes.
Paragraph three, page two, where it says that the compensation, district agrees to pay subject to the availability of funds. And then it says that if, if there's no money, then the district or the providers excuse for many further duties. But then how do they collect any?
What, what we have right now in our, our, we, all the funds that come into the ESD get distributed with the exception of six months' working capital. Six months is to be able to pay those fire departments for six months before the end of the year. So within those six months, if they can see that there is no funding coming in, there's the opportunity for a fire, fire department to pull out of the contract and continue getting paid until their six months is up. But we do keep six months of working budget within there, just to make sure that that doesn't happen. We are a tax-based entity and this is, when somebody bills out there, they're automatically paid. It would be the same thing as saying, well, Brownsville's not going to have any more taxes coming in, so we know you're not going to have any money, so we have a way out. You will always have your taxes coming in, the same as the Emergency Service District, which was voted on. If it ever goes to a vote where they don't want an Emergency Service District, there will be plenty of time for a fire department to be able to pull out and not be paid for that.
Let me see if I understood you correctly. As the city goes annex, annexes county land, then what does that do to the sum that we're...
That, that may lower the sum, but you, like, let's say Brownsville were to annex all the way to Boca Chica. Well, no longer will that be under the ESD, that will be under the city. So the tax revenue that comes in will go directly to the city, none of it will go to the Emergency Service District.
Are you sure about that? Because I, you know, in Williamson County, the ESD number three went to the voters to get that tax rate, right? And, and in that case law, they said, we said, okay, the city, even though it, it, what, what happens when we annex that ESD? The area? And it was stated by various attorneys that we wouldn't get that, that the ESD would conserve that, unless we would purchase all their equipment and all their vehicles that they incurred. So it was cost prohibitive. So it, it, it was cost prohibitive for us to take it in, because we would have to reimburse them. If you built a fire station, if you, is that, is that how you're understanding?
But that's, that's in Williamson County. In Cameron County, we own no property, we own no equipment. Everything is contracted out. We did that specifically for that, so that if the city were to annex, they wouldn't have to buy all of our property with them. So that is the difference between what they do up there and what we do here. Ours is based totally on contracts. So if City of Harrington says, well, I no longer want a contract in the county, then we will go out and ask Brownsville, ask Samanito, would you like to cover this area for that amount of money that Harrington doesn't want to do anymore? And they'll usually take that for another $150,000 in their pocket right off the bat. But we, we will not, and we, this is our board's commitment, is that we do not purchase property that belongs to us. The only property that is purchased are the televisions for the EOC or something within that area. But we do not purchase any kind of equipment, we do not purchase any kind of buildings and we don't do that. We have the ability to, but we choose not to. That's why we're one of the few in the state that is strictly contractual.
Well, don't worry, we're not going to annex.
Well, it depends on the legal structure. He's, he's absolutely, he's right. These ESDs can take different flavors, some have more teeth than others. I think the, the purpose for, for why you have water districts, irrigation districts, ESDs, is essentially there's no city, so who's going to provide all this service? So they, they're, they're gap fillers and then essentially they get absorbed. However, there are some that develop more, again, the legal makeup of the ESD is the trick. They can have all kinds of variations.
It would be cost prohibitive for us to do that. There's no way we can run five departments within the county and with a $3 million budget. It can't be done, so we have to contract. And that's the reason we looked at this very thoroughly and said, there's no way to do it. We tried it at the beginning and it just didn't work. So now we know the best avenue for us is to contract out.
Okay. All right. Then anything else? Any other questions? All right.
I'll move to approve that number 13.
We have a motion to approve the interlocal contract with Cameron County Emergency? In a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And we've also heard about 14, so I'll move to accept, to approve number 14.
May I read the item, please?
Oh, yeah.
Action item number 14, consideration and action to authorize the City of Brownsville to enter into an interlocal contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish firefighting services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designed by Zone Number One of the official Fire Protection Service Zone Map of the Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One.
So this is the fire part of it?
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number 15, consideration and action to authorize the City of Brownsville multimodal transportation to enter into partnership with HEB to offer free passenger rights to encourage residents to attend the annual HEB Feast of Sharing event.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. The 2019 HEB Feast of Sharing event will be in Brownsville at the Jacob Brown Auditorium on Wednesday, November the 6th, 2019. HEB will be feeding hundreds of residents from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Brownsville Metro will be partnering with HEB by providing free passenger rights for individuals in need of transportation to get to this event from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, allowing for the guests to arrive and leave in a safely manner and on time. Brownsville Metro is requesting reimbursement for this service from HEB based on an hourly rate for a total reimbursement of $1,023 for the service. Brownsville Metro is proud to provide this service to the community and partner with HEB. Brownsville Metro staff recommends your approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I do have a question. How's it going to be promoted? How are the citizens going to know that they can get a free ride to the Feast of Sharing?
HEB is putting out flyers and, and distributing, and we also have them in all our buses.
Okay.
We have the flyers on there.
Okay. All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number 16, consideration and action to award a contract to Safety Vision for the purchase of onboard video surveillance system equipment replace, replacement. Bit number BSE-48-0719 for the City of Brownsville Multimodal Transportation Department fleet in the amount of $143,690.
RJ Garza will be giving the presentation on this one.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. The City of Brownsville solicited an IFB, an invitation for bid, and received three bids for providing surveillance onboard, surveillance cameras. A lot of them are, need to be replaced in our buses. The paratrend units don't have any surveillance cameras at all. So we went ahead and solicited for, for all of that replacement. It's, all our, the equipment is quite outdated, it's hard to get parts for, for the equipment. For that reason, we're, we're requesting your consideration and authorization to award this. You know, safety is our, our passing, safety for our passengers and, and staff and our drivers and our community is a top priority for us. These new onboard surveillance systems would drastically increase our ability to ensure safe operations and promote public safety. Staff recommends authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Safety Vision in the amount of $143,690.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Action item number 17, consideration and action to award a contract for sand school renovation to Seua Corporation, bit number SMP-67-1219 in the amount of $775,000 budget available from the 2017 Certificate of Obligation Funds.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. We bring forth this item to you for approval. We recommend it as long with our Architect GMS. And that is for the deck and the undercarriage of the swimming pool. There's these tunnels, so there's some concrete that's falling down and rusted rebar. It's in essential need to get this replaced, and so we recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve, do I have a second? Motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second, those in favor? Aye. Stand adjourned.